Well, the clerk treasurer, please call the roll.
I'm for Icon.
Here.
Councilor King.
Here.
Councilor Nistley. Councilor Perez.
Here.
Councilor Rixhicker.
Here.
Councilor Schrock.
Here.
Council President Weddle.
Here.
Youth Advisor Velazquez Valdez.
Thank you. And our youth advisor did contact me before the meeting. This is one of the meetings she wasn't going to be able to make this summer. So just wanted to remind everybody of that. And do apologize for starting a little late here. We had technical difficulties with the microphones and recording system. So we wanted to make sure to get all this recorded for the evening. It brings us to, actually, we don't have any minutes in front of us for approval, but it does bring us to the approval of our meeting agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda or a motion to approve as submitted?
No move.
Motion by King and second by Icon to approve the agenda for this evening. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And that passes. Thank you. That brings us to privilege of the floor. Is there anybody in the audience who wish to speak to the council of something that is not on the agenda tonight? Mr. Malone? You have to do it at the microphone and please state your name and a three-minute time limit on each speaker.
And do sign in, please. Please sign in.
Go to Yorktown Drive.
Would you please sign in, sir?
Sign in for us, Bill. Piece of paper. Can you sign your name into the court treasurer, please?
Signing in for those of you who haven't been here before is just so we can make sure and get your name accurate in the minutes.
In the, um, once the public comment is closed. Rules of order, what I've read about is discussion has to be amongst the council. And when you call upon the developer to come back up and talk, that doesn't give public a chance to respond again to that comment. So how can you bring up another comment without another chance to public comment?
Is this in reference to what's happening tonight on the agenda?
Previous, previous meetings, the developers come up and talk at will and the public is shut down.
We have a period of time for the public to own all of our, all of our topics where there's a period of time where the public speaks and then once that's closed, it's up to the council to open it back up again.
Why would the developer be allowed to come back forward and present more information or contrary information about the public being allowed to respond to?
We, we always allow the whoever is making the petition to the council, the plan commission, whoever, they always have the opportunities to speak and answer questions of the council members. They're making the petition.
Rules of orders allows the person in the audience who's been directed to have a chance to respond to.
City of Goshen, uh, so in the state of Indiana, we have to allow public input during privilege of the floor. We have to allow it during public hearings. That's the only time during, in the state of Indiana, that we have to allow public input. City of Goshen has always allowed public input on, on, um, all the pieces as we go through the vote before the council takes a vote. So we actually go above and beyond already, sir.
And the developer is allowed to come up and talk with no one else responding to it.
If they were invited up, yes.
And then if, if, if someone yourself or anyone else makes a pointed question or comment, but someone in the audience, then that, some person in the audience doesn't have a chance to respond to that comment?
I would have to know the exact situation, but if, if there was a comment made and that person was responding to the first comment, you, you can go back and forth all night. So each person gets an.
But if you had brought up a new subject, then you'd have to allow some of the audiences to respond to, correct?
No.
No?
No. Bodhi, am I incorrect there?
Excuse me. Actually, Indiana law does not require public input at meetings. It does require public input at hearings. And so by the council doing privilege of the floor actually gives the audience more opportunity to speak than what state statute requires.
Okay. Thank you. I saw another couple of hands up. Glenn.
Glenn Ball, Goshen. Noticed in my neighborhood, a little bit heavier, uh, traffic through the bridge being closed down on 119. My concern is some of that heavier traffic is not allowed. Like to see a little bit more patrols. I don't know why they, anybody would think they could run down Dewey and come out on that little quarter block or thirty foot of, on the Indiana with a semi, but, uh, our roads are already bad enough in that neighborhood. Need to be redone, but I know that won't happen for another decade. So, uh, you know, we don't need semis running it. I'm just asking that we get a few more patrols out that way. You may not be able to get them on weight, but you can get them where it says no trucks. I mean, even Green Road is getting hit hard. We're cutting short there. We cut up Indiana. Indiana's a no truck. So just the only thing, no sugar today.
Thank you, Glenn. Pamela, I think I saw your hand.
Well, I should, Goshen, um, in my recollection of the meeting that the gentleman was asking about, he spoke, privilege of the floor ended, and then you all were in discussion. And the developer came up not, I've seen meetings where you guys have asked developers to come up because you have a specific question. They come up and answer. At that meeting, the way I remember seeing it was that, that the gentleman came up uninvited and waited while you guys were talking and then interjected. So that kind of leads to what I want to, uh, a concern I have that I want to share with you guys tonight. Over the last few years, I've posted periodically on Facebook, some of my frustrations with you. I'm, I'm going to have a squirrel moment. I forgot. Jeremy, Becky needs a vacation. Because we were talking before the meeting and while I don't agree with the things she comes up with, a lot of the times, I know she works very hard and is dedicated. And if you want to keep a good employee, give her a vacation and no phone calls. Okay. So, so I post these things because I'm frustrated and Facebook is where you sometimes go with frustrations. A friend of mine who I've known pre-Facebook, who tends to be a glass half empty kind of guy, says that you all act like an oligarchy. And I've always just like, yeah, whatever, David. I don't know. Um, but some of the things over the last few months have made me start to wonder, like, um, that particular thing where the gentleman didn't have a chance to respond to, but the developer was allowed to come up without an invitation. Um, I'm nervous as I'll get out. So I've got my notes here. And the Lipard, the, the tiffing that you reviewed recently, and they're non-compliant since, what, 2018? They still are allowed to have that. That just doesn't really make a whole lot of sense to me. And the special meeting that you had when Last Dance came and asked for more money because things cost more. Um, and that was a sure, here you go. What really was the kicker for me was when he asked for, without even skipping a beat, to be relieved from the $440,000 and, and you're giving him seven years. When you, I mean, I know that's a small segment of what you all do, but it's a segment that leaves me kind of concerned. And, um, when I think about Lipard and Last Dance and those sorts of things, I think about the fact that a lot of our industrial areas are going to start laying off and, um, collectively, we seem to be giving a lot of perks to industry. And it's been proven over time that trickle-down economics just doesn't work. So I'm concerned for our city. I'm concerned for the work that you guys have to do. I'm concerned for the citizens who are going to be feeling the brunt on their back as they get laid off, et cetera, while, am I about out of time? While the big guys still get their stuff.
Thank you, Pamela. Was there anybody else who wished to speak during privilege of the floor? Yes, sir.
Lewis Morris. Goshen, Indiana, 806 South 10th. Okay, at our last meeting, two guys' last meeting, not your guys', but our last meeting, we are invited to, why they had agreed that they would not do this. Now, they've changed their agreement.
Sir, I apologize. That's, that's on the agenda tonight. So you'll have to wait until we have that, that item on the agenda. Privilege of the floor is just for things that aren't on the agenda.
Things that aren't on the agenda.
Correct.
What's on the agenda?
The, the only thing you're here for tonight is the apartment complex at 10th and Plymouth.
Yeah, that's what I'm here for.
Yeah. So I'm just, you'll have to, you'll have to speak on that when it's on, on the floor. We're, we're in privilege of the floor right now. And privilege of the floor is only for things without.
Whatever we're doing, uh, you know, some, the, one, the guy, George, I mean, Schrock. Okay, Schrock.
Sir, I, I just need you to wait about 10 minutes and then we can call you up and you can speak and say what you're going to say, but this is on, you're, you're speaking now to the item that is on the agenda tonight. If you have an issue with a street or something like that, it's what privilege of the floor is. Okay, apologize. Anybody else wish to speak during privilege of the floor of something that is not on the agenda? Okay, I'll close privilege of the floor and we'll move into the first item. Um, just a couple, this is on the planning department, uh, came from planning department, plan commission ordinance 5123 that we have in front of us right now. And this is the amend, amended ordinance 301. Sorry, three. Can't read my own writing. 3011 by rezoning real estate, um, on 10th Street and, and, um, Plymouth Avenue there for the apartment complex. Due to the fact that we did have a motion to reconsider, uh, we technically, this was first reading we had at that meeting. That motion to reconsider was made at our last meeting and that was immediately tabled to this meeting. So we don't have to go through our normal introduction process with the, it's, I'm just explaining to everybody, it's, it's already on the floor. Um, and there are a couple of things just like to address quickly before I turn it over to Councilman Schrock to explain, um, why he made the motion and what his amendments, uh, suggested amendments are for the council. Real quickly to the public and everybody here, um, council members work hard to listen to everybody and a big part of being, being, um, having these votes and being part of this is trying to represent everybody that's at the table, um, which would be, um, in this situation, you know, local businesses, residents and, and developer and other city needs. So I, I just, I personally applaud Councilman Schrock for trying to find some middle ground. Uh, we don't know if it'll pass tonight. We don't know what'll happen yet, but the discussion will be, but I do applaud him for trying to find some middle ground and being willing to, um, uh, to present that to everybody to see if it, if it's something that will work. Uh, there has been a couple of accusations about the legality of the motion to reconsider that's happened and also the legality of one of our council members being able to vote. Uh, we had city attorney look into both of those, Bodhi Stagelmann. And Bodhi, if you would mind just commenting on those two pieces, um, quickly, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. I was approached by one council member, who had heard through anonymous sources that somebody claimed, um, that this member was not eligible to vote on matters because the council member did not reside in the district that the council member represents.
I just need to hold it closer to your mouth.
But anyway, there was an accusation that this council member did not reside in the, um, district that the council member represents. I'm not going to get into details, but I had a discussion with the council member and there are some temporary circumstances, uh, that are causing this person to not reside, uh, in their home at this point. My conclusion under Indiana law is there's a not been an intent to abandon the members residence and there's not been an intent to establish a new residence. And based on that, the prior residence is still the residence of this council member, which means, uh, the member has every right, authority to act on business before the council. So, um, I view that as a non-issue. Um, the other issue was the motion to reconsider. Motion was made, um, a by a person who voted in the majority, um, at the first vote or, uh, person who voted was in the, um, for that voted against. So that had, that person has the ability to make the motion to reconsider. Um, the timing of the motion, Roberts rules is very long and detailed. Um, it talks about the motion needing to be made at the same day or the next day within the session on which business is held. Uh, Roberts rules distinguishes between a meeting and a session. And a session can be thought of as a series of meetings. I'm not entirely clear on whether, the way the city council here notices meetings for an entire year, whether that would be considered a session of this council. So, um, leaving that where it is with some ambiguity, um, the remedy for an improper motion would be an objection. Under Roberts rules, an objection is to be made at the time that the motion in question is made. There was no objection made to the motion, uh, it carried and the motion was tabled until today. So, um, while there's some ambiguity on whether the motion to reconsider was timely made, there was no timely objection made to the motion. And so, um, I guess my conclusion would be is basically carry on. Roberts rules, I think we need to think Roberts rules as a way to organize a meeting, to have it run properly, smoothly. And I think most importantly, that minority voices have an opportunity to be heard. I think that's the spirit behind Roberts rules. It's not to be used as a sword to defeat a motion that may not have been adopted, technically correctly. Um, in fact, I think every meeting that you guys conduct violates Roberts rules in one way or another. I mean, just to be honest. Um, and I've never heard once that a motion was struck down or an action was struck down because of a technical violation of Roberts rules.
And Bodhi, um, uh, who can, who can make those objections? Is it, it's just the council members or members of that particular board, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. Well, I just wanted to clear up those two matters quick, uh, quickly because we have gotten some communications over the last few days of, of both of those, but want to make sure everybody knew that this is, is moving forward, uh, properly. Um, uh, so I'll, I'll turn it over now to Councilman Matt Schrock who made the motion to reconsider. And, um, yeah, Matt, the floor is yours.
Before I go ahead and make the motion to amend, there's just a couple of things I want to read that I typed up and handwrote. Based on conversations with the developer and Mark and Becky and the redevelopment commission, I brought back this, uh, district council with a list of amendments to the original plan. I think these changes address some of the residents' concerns. And of course, everybody knows that Goshen does need housing desperately, not just affordable housing, but all housing. And we now have a developer who's willing to step up and help remedy some of Goshen's harsh housing problem. Voting on projects like this are always a tough decision for me. Sorry. Tough decisions, tough decisions for me. I really do, they're just tough. I really do feel for the people that just don't want the neighborhood to change. Heck, I don't like changing. But as I've gotten older and with more responsibility, like where I'm sitting right now, I've accepted that some change is good. And I hope some of the residents from this area might try to accept some change as I have. So I would like to make a motion to amend ordinance 5123.
Can you, um, state your amendments?
Oh, geez, sorry.
You're fine.
And these are the amendments. Elimination of the market, market space area and the downsizing of building A, which building A is the building that runs parallel to Plymouth Avenue, resulting in a reduction of over 8,000 square feet. Which by doing that moves the east wall of the building 20 plus feet further back from 10th Street, increasing that setback to 54, actually over 54 feet. Something else that happens by downsizing this building is will, there will also be an increased setback on the Plymouth Avenue side, the south side of the building from 10 feet to 12 feet. I know it's only two feet, but it is two feet. The biggest thing is the required parking spaces by making this building smaller will be reduced from 204 to 195 as a result of downsizing the same building I'm talking about. Also, in the same project, the same PUD, where there will, we will be, we want to, or the developer wants to, add 35 additional public parking spaces on the south side of Douglas Street for a total of 209 spaces, including the 174 that are on the site itself. And, and this doesn't have anything, this, this is something beyond this as far as the 10th Street improvements. I do have a list of what's going to, water main replacement, roadway reconstruction, installation of curbing and dry wells for drainage, sidewalk reconstruction. And the big one is on-street parking clearly defined for existing 10th Street residents, not the people, not the tenants. And that's, uh, that's all I got.
So your motion is to eliminate the first floor space, um, which sizes down the building, uh, which also eliminates some beds and needs for parking. And then also to add the additional 35, uh, parking spaces that would be to the north that would be public parking. Is that, okay.
Sandy wants to increase the setback from.
Yes, I'm sorry. And the setback changes. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for that, Councilman. Is there a second to the motion to amend?
Second.
Saying it by Councilman Perez. Are there any council members that are not up to date or understand what these, the, what all the motion is?
I just want a clarification. Um, this doesn't eliminate the coffee shop. It just eliminates the maker's space, correct?
I believe that's correct.
Coffee shop stays. Okay. Idea of a coffee shop. Okay. Just checking.
So maybe if I could, to the council members, maybe wise to have the developer come up and kind of state how, how exactly this affects the project as far as beds removed and, um, space removed. And is that council members okay with that or? John, would you be willing to come up and comment on the, the amendment? And, and I, I think you've had discussions with Councilman Schrock in between.
I did.
Yeah. So just if you could bring everybody up to date, that'd be great.
Excuse me. Could you please sign in?
I would be happy to. So, good evening. Good to see you all again. Very happy to be back. Um, so we did after the last meeting, several discussions were had. I had the opportunity to sit down with Councilman Schrock last week, uh, walked through some amendments that we had proposed, the ones that he just outlined. Um, you know, right after that meeting, we got together with our design team, looked at what we could do, how we might be able to, um, change this project to address some concerns. By reducing the size of that building A, we've eliminated eight bedrooms, eliminated the maker's space that created that. Um, some additional parking, the city has graciously stepped up with the public parking. Um, if you use the 10th Street right away of 66 feet plus our 54, we're now 120 feet away from 10th Street across the street's yard, not counting their house. So, you know, we had a very good discussion with Councilman Schrock. Very much appreciate him bringing this forward. I know we've heard a lot of negative comments in this room over the last two months and a lot of things have been said about me, the project, um, the concept, the location, all of those things. I hate Facebook. I don't know who's on Facebook. Um, but I was alerted to Facebook and Goshen News after the last vote had this on their Facebook page and there were 58 comments and 54 were in favor of the project. And the four that weren't, the people that were in favor engaged in a meaningful conversation with those that weren't. That is what I like. Um, and we read all of them and we took them all into account.
Mayor, can I have a point of order?
Yes.
I'm trying to, in terms of the, the, the question was to sort of talk about the actual amendments. I don't know about, just trying to figure out sort of the clarity of talking about Facebook and the actual amendments.
Fine. If, if, I mean, I was making my presentation, but if you just want to stick to the amendments, that's fine as well.
I would prefer to stick with the amendments.
Yeah. So the amendments are, as Councilman Schrock has laid them out, um, we went back and looked at, you know, we thought the maker's space was a good idea. We thought it was something that would be embraced and instead it seemed to be a bit of a lightning rod. And so we removed that space. We've kept the coffee shop. We've kept all our amenities, um, that we've talked about. You know, we still have onsite management. We have onsite maintenance. We still have quarterly inspections. We're going to monitor parking. We're going to monitor how many people are in the units. Um, the dog wash, the bike rack, all of those things are still there. We just shrunk that building to give it a little more space and create some additional parking. Those were the two major things that, that we heard was that building was a little too big and the parking was a little too light. And so by adding the Douglas Street parking, by freeing up spaces on our, um, property, by eliminating the maker's space, eliminating the eight bedrooms, we've been able to create that additional space.
So there's an elimination of eight bedrooms. Is that correct?
Excuse me?
Eight bedrooms have been eliminated?
Yeah. And that's only because we count studios and one bedrooms as one bedrooms. Um, if we're actually swapping some two beds for studios. And so it actually eliminates 18 if you don't count a studio as a bedroom, but technically it's eight.
Yeah. Any questions from council members for either Councilman Schrock or for John?
I.
You know, in our previous meetings, we had mentioned about downsizing and doing things and what we got from you was if we do that, we can't afford to do it. Is this changing project for money-wise, making it, not making it?
You know, it's fine. We reduced, our unit count is the same. We're 136 units. We've reduced bedrooms. So we've changed our unit count. We've shrunk that building down. So we save a little money on a slightly smaller building, lose a little money on rents. Um, we can still make this work the way we've designed it. You know, and I've said this at every meeting, the fourth floor on building A is really important to the project. Um, having that rooftop amenity, having that fourth floor, um, creating something that's special there. That's not just three-story walk-up units is important to our vision. And, and I think it's important to the, to the city and what we're trying to create here. Um, so instead of just lopping off a fourth floor, we lopped off, not the end of the building. We took it out of the middle technically, but nonetheless, we reduced that building that kept that, that height and that amenity and that beautiful view of downtown that we wanted.
And this won't hurt the project in any way of groundwater retention, cutting back on that?
It creates a little more space for us, honestly. So that patio on 10th Street now comes back another 20 feet. So now we're 54 feet there. Creates some opportunity for stormwater on the corner, um, more pervious pavers with that patio. So. So obviously shrinking building A a little bit helps us with our stormwater. Um, but I'm. Yeah. Yeah.
And I guess my other question for people is, are you going to be able to finance the stormwater upgrade if it doesn't work the first time?
I'm paying engineers and architects a lot of money to make sure it works the first time.
I know we went through that.
And so if it doesn't work the first time, there'll be insurance involved. Yeah, it'll work the first time.
I mean, I, I, the reason I brought that up is because of our intermediate school.
Yeah.
We've had problems out there and it was designed to and everything and.
Yeah.
The city's helped pay to pay for that.
Well, I, anecdotally, I will tell you this, you know, you build projects and everybody does a great job designing them, at the end, there's always going to be something that doesn't work quite like you want it, right? It's why they have sticks on interstates, because they didn't think people would go that way, but um, we have a project now where we have a little bit of a drainage issue, and it's because we tried to plant grass too early and the water's running off and it's hitting a neighbor's yard, and so we're dealing with it, right? We're, we're putting down river rock, we're reseeding it, there are always going to be um, entry issues, right, as you move from development to construction to occupancy. And we fix those, like, I mean.
We have to trust, because we're not engineers or anything, so yeah, we have to trust what you're saying and what your engineers are telling you.
Yeah.
And then when it doesn't work, then we're the ones that take the fall. So I mean, we, we have to, we have to take your word for it.
Well, and you're not the only ones that take the fall for it, it's, I'm the one whose name is on everything, I'm the one signing the guarantees, and so.
Probably guarantee you that, yeah, you'll take the fall if it doesn't work.
So, you know, we're, again, I've said this many times before this council, we, we're not in the business of building and leaving. Um, you know, we, we want to do more in Goshen if we get past tonight. Um, we, we want to be a good developer in your community, we, we're not going to leave a problem. It's just not what we do.
Like I said before, I know that there wasn't much give and take from our part and your part when we were talking about downsizing it some, but I actually uh, want to commend you for coming back and talking with Matt to the concerns of what we had and what he had and, and that. I really appreciate you coming back and talking to him about that.
Well, and we've, we've appreciated the whole process, because even before we got to council, this project was bigger. And so we had originally proposed six buildings, and, I mean, look, we're, we're trying to figure it out too as we look at a site. And so as we had conversations, we heard concerns. So this, this project is, you know, it's five buildings, we've shrunk a building, we started at six, we started at something like a hundred and fifty-six units, um, and that's what it's all about, it's, it's conversations, it's give and take, it's listening to people and trying to find a balance that works for all of us.
I just want to encourage that if this does go through tonight, that you be a good neighbor.
Right, you're, you're welcome to call any other town we're in, that's what we do. But it's important, it's as important to us as it is to you, because, you know, we're going to leave here and we may look to go develop in another city, and that city's going to call Jeremy, and they're going to ask, did he follow through, did he do what he said he was going to do? If Jeremy says no, then I'm out of business, so it's important to us that we stand behind our word.
Thank you.
John?
Go ahead, Don.
Um, yeah, how, how do you look at these thirty-five additional public parking spaces? You really, you really, there's no way to control it, there, you can't tow anybody's car away, there's.
No.
Anybody can park here because it's public, it just is, is right next to adjacent to this development, and it looked like the, the center aisle, almost make it looks like it's part of the development when you, when you redesigned that.
And we did that intentionally, so it didn't look off, I mean, it may end up being thirty-one if we have more tree islands, but we lined it up with our tree islands just for aesthetics. Um, you're right, we can't control who parks there. Uh, we're not going to tow people if they do park there, it's, it's overflow parking. Um, we really think we have enough spaces in this project based on other projects and everything you read and everything you look at. And so having those additional thirty-five spaces just eliminates any parking concern. If it's a big weekend and everybody's home and everybody has their mom and dad over, then there's thirty-five extra parking spaces. As Councilman Schrock said, we're going to monitor and make sure our residents aren't parking on the east side of Tenth Street. And if a neighbor on Tenth Street calls us and says, hey, apartment two oh one is parking here, well, then we'll tell them to move. Right, there's plenty of parking with our site and the public parking that, um, there shouldn't be anyone parking on Tenth Street.
So all, all the parking on Douglas is on one side, there's, there's not enough room. Right, is that the way I look at this?
Yeah, we're just, just on the south side, it's a, it's a fairly tight easement, and quite honestly, we did not want to intrude upon Gleason, right, I mean, I've said this over and over, we want to be a good neighbor, and so it is a right-of-way at this point, the city has graciously agreed to put parking in those spaces, we understand that the other side, the north side of Douglas, um, Gleason needs some flexibility there, and if we were to put thirty-five units on that side, that would eliminate their flexibility. So this is, I think, a nice compromise that gets some additional public parking while also respecting our neighbor to the north.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Yeah.
Jurisdiction of those parking spaces.
That'll be, that'll be public parking, um, the, the plowing is something we'll have to work out, whether we can contract with, you know, through somebody else, or it's another city lot that we are, you know, like, we take care of some throughout the city. Um, so that's something we'll have to work out. And a big reason why we wanted to keep it public and not, not just do it for Gleason or not, just do it for this development is, um, uh, since it's public space, now we thought it would be best if it benefited all three entities, and when I say entities, I'm talking the neighborhood, Gleason, and that's that way whoever has overflow parking has access to it.
Um, is the city putting it in or is the developer?
I, I believe we would be doing it through the redevelopment commission, uh, in the last meeting, uh, if you remember, we talked about not only doing that piece, but also doing the upgrades to, um, uh, Tenth Street with curb and the drywells and for the, it helped with stormwater retention. Um, I think we had some sidewalks involved in that, but, um, for that plan, that plan particularly, Tenth Street, we're going to be reaching out and having some neighborhood, uh, meetings to talk about what we think should happen, and also talk to the neighborhood about what they'd like to see happen as well.
I'm curious, Mayor, in terms of initiatives for development staff, so now that the the curb is now, you said fifty-four feet away from Tenth Street, is that correct?
So the building is fifty-four, six back from Tenth Street.
Okay.
And then the patio is in that area.
Okay, so the question I had is, you just mentioned sidewalks, is that, like, would there be a possibility to put a sidewalk on Plymouth there, because I know we have sidewalk as you start on tent on, I'm not sure what street, the eleventh street or?
There, there is a sidewalk going there already.
On Plymouth, correct.
Where the actual building, the, the, the brown building, is that right now?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so our, our setback on Plymouth is going from ten to twelve.
There is a sidewalk that runs completely along that building from the road crossing all the way to Tenth Street.
Yep. Yes.
Um, I'd like to just say a few things, I, I'd like to commend John for really working and trying to make sure that this development will fit the needs of everybody in the area, and, um, and thank you for reassessing the project enough to work with, with Matt so that he feels comfortable enough to vote for this. And I really commend Matt for taking, um, a very difficult stand on something he believes in. Sitting up here and making votes sometimes on really difficult projects is not easy. And as he said, it's, it's hard because you have to take a lot of things into consideration, and you may get a lot of pressure because of different feelings from either side, and we have to weigh those feelings and we have to decide, is this, uh, uh, best for Goshen, is it best for the community, is it best for a specific area? And right now, we have to think about what's best for Goshen, and Goshen needs housing. And, um, I, I also want to comment on the the stress that has been put upon this project on the, some of the members of the council um, by individuals of the community, and it's uncalled for, and, um, we do our best. And I hope that you all understand that, and we're here for, we're here for Goshen. We are here to make Goshen better, and we, we put our, our time on this, and we're here because we love Goshen. So I just want people to hear that and remember that when they're interacting with us, and, um, thank you, Matt, for bringing this back.
Any other comments on the amendments?
Yeah, we're not, we're not to the floor yet, right, we're not, okay. Um, I have one question, Matt, uh, Councilman Schrock, when he was reading his, through his amendments, he added this sheet to during that conversation, which was new water mains, new sewer mains, new curbs, okay, none of that is part of the amendment, this is just.
Background for us.
Yeah, that was the background, correct.
So that we understand that that's a parallel.
That we're, we're going to, we're pretty assured that the redevelopment commission is going to do this to help the neighbors.
That's an incredibly important part of this project.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's a separate project.
I just wanted to make sure that it's not part of the resolution.
Correct.
But while we're discussing the whole thing and what's, what's happening here, and, you know, how we affect the neighborhood, this list is what redevelopment commission is planning on doing to make this project.
Correct.
She is nodding in the affirmative.
Yes, that is, yes, and that's a correct.
On that vein, though, this has not been brought forth to the redevelopment commission.
It was discussed at our last meeting.
It was discussed.
It was supported, which is what's written in the memo. And so the next step would be to move forward with a design.
Okay.
There's a lot of homework that needs done, survey work, infrastructure assessment, and so it's going to be further discussed with the commission.
Is it safe to say that the redevelopment commission supports that regardless of whatever development goes in here?
I do believe so.
Yeah, I mean.
And we know that, we know that the water infrastructure needs.
I don't want to speak to any other redevelopment commission members, but that was kind of my thought processes, regardless of anything that happens to this property, that needs to be addressed regardless.
That's correct, that's my.
And so, I mean, yeah, I don't want to, these are still decisions that the redevelopment commission has to vote on.
Correct.
Nothing has been voted, but I think that through staff conversation, the consensus was that the majority of the redevelopment commission was in favor of proceeding forward.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure that was a little clear.
Thank you.
Than saying that the redevelopment commission already committed to do this.
Right.
That's, that's good, and, and I think by having it here and our eyes on it, and from what I'm gathering in this conversation, I mean, I think that we're trying to say that I think council is casting votes with the notion that this was, so it's a form of informal direction of that.
And there are at least three redevelopment commission members here, so if they, their recollection is different than what I said, I would please encourage you to correct me.
I, I would also like to say, Matt, thank you for bringing this back, and it's, it's a challenge when you, when you have to rethink. Are you wanting me to hold this thought for going to there and then coming back?
I didn't know, I just.
If we're talking about the amendments, I mean.
It sounds like a lot of this conversation is going.
It's still to the.
As long as it comes back to the amendment.
Yeah, in my mind, it's still that he brought these amendments, and I guess I just wanted to say in, in a general sense that I'm appreciative as others have, have, um, said of, of your willingness and, and the council's willingness to walk through this. And, and I think that the people who have come here angry and vocal have helped make this a better, a better, a, a better project for Goshen.
Absolutely.
And I'm, and I'm grateful for that, I, I will feel better about this here than, than before, and, and I'm, I think that's what the whole process and democracy is about, so I'm grateful.
Yeah.
Well said.
The, the mo- sorry, the motion was to um, the resolution with these five amendments, okay, can these amendments be taken away or added to throughout this whole process, or are we stuck on these five?
So.
You understand, you understand my question?
Are you talking the five that are new water main, new sewer main?
No.
Okay, on, okay, I don't have that sheet in front of me, but yes, that'd be Matt's, Matt's letter would be the, what, the amendment. So right now, they're all on the floor, so when we've, you can make a motion to remove one, um, and see if you get a second, then we'd be amending the amendment.
Okay, now I just wanted to know what, what all the possibilities were, so.
Right, right now, if you vote yes on the amendment, we, we've passed nothing, but we've changed our, um, agreement, the ordinance to include all these amendments in it, then we'll still have to vote on the actual ordinance.
And we could add other amendments, we could remove some of those.
Exactly.
However you want, yeah.
Okay, I just, I want to know what.
Or as the mayor said, you could make an amendment to the amendment to the, yeah.
That gets really confusing, so I'd appreciate if you just dealt with amendment at a time and then change it after that. Any other questions, comments, okay, so, um.
Mayor, can I say one more?
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, so in all three of these meetings, there has, the neighbors have come up, they have voiced their concerns, there have been a lot of things that have been said that just aren't true. And so please keep that in mind, and I'm happy to come up and to correct the record when we're done. This is not low-income housing, this is not section eight housing, there's a list of other things that have been said that, um, I'd like the opportunity to correct the record if it's necessary when public comment is finished. Um, so we're all talking about the same project, because I don't think that happened last meeting, so that's my only request.
Thank you.
Um, thank you very much.
Yeah, so council members, uh, we have the amendments in front of us. Um, this evening's already been a little confusing, because we had privilege of the floor, had to wait for this. Um, I guess if the council's open to it, I think we should approve the amendments or vote them down, whatever you're going to do, and then go to the, the audience for comment with whatever's been amended, rather than um, comments right now and then comments again later, just because of the number of people in the room, is, is council open to that?
To rephrase that, the question is, do we want to vote on the amendments as presented? Then the whole, the ordinance is in front of us as amended, anyone from the public can then come up and speak. We can also make amendments after that to remove something if it seems logical, or do we want to have the public come up and speak only on the amendments, only on the amendments? Then we vote on them, and then we open up the conversation to the whole ordinance as amended.
Yeah, I, I, I just think it'll be easier for everybody if we just get this done and then let them speak on anything they want to on this as amended, would be my.
I think that makes the most sense.
Okay.
So just so the public knows, again, I'm going to rea- reiterate, the vote that will be happening now is only for the amendments. Everyone will have every opportunity to get up and speak after that vote before any final vote is, is taken.
Correct. So is there any more discussion from the council on the amendments? Okay, we have a motion to second to amend ordinance fifty-one twenty-three as stated by Councilman Schrock. Will the clerk treasurer please call the roll?
Councilor Acorn?
Yes.
Councilor King?
Yes.
Councilor Nisley?
Yes.
Councilor Bettis?
Yes.
Councilor Rexhacker?
Yes.
Councilor Schrock?
Yes.
Council President Wedle?
Yes.
And the amendment passes seven to zero, and, um, I, I guess I would ask the council now, are there any other amendments you have now, or would amendments possibly come up after public comment? I s-
I don't have any.
Okay, I was just going to say, if you knew of one, let's do it before, okay.
When I would do it now, but if not, we might hear something.
Okay.
Okay.
Are you good if I go to public comment now?
I'm good.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to open up to.
Mayor?
Yes.
More appropriately, this is reopening the public hearing, since there was already a public hearing before.
That we actually don't have a public hearing on this, yeah, this is just public comment, yeah. Um, so now we'll go to the public for comment, and, um, keep in mind, three minutes per person. Uh, Council President Wedle will keep track and try to notify you when your time is up, and the gentleman with the green shirt.
Gentleman come up that tried earlier?
Yeah, the, the gentleman that wanted to speak during prior to the floor.
That'd be great.
I apologize, it was a technicality, but we had to wait, so we'd like to, like to hear from you now.
Mr. Mayor, um, you might consider, this is just a suggestion, that those who have not previously had a chance to comment perhaps would have the first opportunity to comment at this meeting?
Thank you, yeah.
Just, just state your name again, so.
Okay. Louis Morris.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
One thing they.
One thing they the Rock there said that he was thought the project was good, but it was a bad location. Has that location changed? Or is it still locate still located on Western Rubber? And also, I don't consider it a good project. There's gonna be eighty people per acre, about eighty people per acre. And that's not a good project. That's worker warehousing, not worker housing is warehousing. It's no different than than having all these people here live inside their own room inside this room. Sure, you'll have you'll have housing, but it isn't gonna be good housing. And if it don't work out, who pays for it? The neighbors, the other the other people around there pay for it, not you guys. The mayor don't pay for it. The people voting on it don't up here don't pay for it. The neighbors pay for it. And we have, you know, increased traffic. Well, yeah, you're gonna have increased traffic. Everybody knows that. That is a problem that hasn't been solved yet. Snow removal, where they gonna put the snow, especially when it's up on the roof? It's gonna melt, it's gonna run down and it's gonna have to go somewhere. I've seen a lot of water come from over there. And factories, you're you're crowding out, Goshen manufacturing. And you never finish the bike the bike path. It don't go all the way to thirty three. So there's a lot of things that you need to finish, but this is bad idea for putting this many people in such a small area. You have to you have to think of the people, the workers. They will never own this. The only thing they will live there is because they're forced to. And if they and if you don't force them to, they won't live there. They can't afford it nowhere else. And a lot of things that you said like with a large majority why when we when we had the last meeting, most of people were not for this. Now, people haven't changed their minds. The ones you said there were there were five of them. Well, we have more than five that don't think this is a good project. I have nobody on Tenth Street that thinks it's a good project. But it's not true.
So I I apologize. We can't have discussions between people that are all testifying to the council.
Well, there's one person across from Western Rubber that thinks this is a good project. I don't know of anybody else and she didn't even say she was across from Western Rubber. She's on Tenth Street. And and when they when they voted it down last time, everybody planned. So you know that that if you're saying out of a hundred and fifty, there's only five. That's not true. Moving the marketplace, that will cut down on some of the traffic.
I wish it wasn't that loud. Sorry.
I think it's good.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Appreciate your comments, though.
That that put that put me over the bar.
Um, and clerk treasurer did bring up a good point. We've had several public meetings on this. So if we could give an opportunity to people that haven't spoke before, um, uh, please raise your hands and then we'll try to get everybody to the room as well. Um, I'm just gonna start over here with you, ma'am. And I'll do my best to keep watching hands and stay in order here.
So go ahead. So again, just go and sign in, okay, for clerk treasurer, then just give us your name. I'm doing three minutes. I do not start the timer until you've collected your thoughts and kind of go. So I'm not gonna rush.
My name is Naomi Zuck. I live here in Goshen. I already did. I thought I had to sign in before I.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Spoke. So I'm not used to city meetings. Um, yeah, this is the first time I've spoken on it. I have followed it on Zoom. I have read the um, the plan. I have Googled the developer. And I thought it was a good plan. Um, I was surprised it wasn't passed. I live here in the neighborhood. I work in the neighborhood. I pass the parcel twice a day. So probably at the busiest time of the day. Um, and I thought it was a good plan. But I would like to thank Mr. Schrock because what I'm looking at is a much better plan. My biggest concern was visibility on that corner. So if you are there on that corner at three thirty eight to three fifty on a weekday, you're going to see a lot of high schoolers. You're going to see a lot of people on skateboards, on bikes, on phones. They're not looking like that corner. And I thought of a big building and the visibility. I was concerned that people would not see kids running out or chasing a friend. So the setback being changed really increases visibility on that corner substantially. Also, it increases like green space, the the room view room, the not feeling so claustrophobic. We need housing. I think it's a good use of space. I found it very difficult to find a place to live in the neighborhood when I needed to find housing three years ago. I found it very difficult to find a place to live two years ago. I knocked on every single door in a three block radius multiple times, asking them, can I buy your house or do you rent this? Or, you know, and because I needed to live in walking distance of this parcel. If this had existed, I would have rented it and I would have known I didn't own hoping that I could buy a house in that neighborhood. The idea of taking it up, giving more people access to the amenities of the neighborhood, access to the walking trails. I am in favor of that. I think it's a very good use of space and it should be a residential property. I feel like this is good development and it is the best use of space and I really like the new design. Thank you, Mr. Schrock.
Thank you.
Councilman Schrock.
Um, I saw Commissioner Rogers hand up back there.
Good evening. I'm signing in here. I'm Brad Rogers. I live in Goshen. I'm also a county commissioner. And I just wanted to say a few remarks that, you know, as county commissioner, we we deal with uh, this need for housing. And um, Goshen City, as well as Elkhart, are in unique opportunities to provide this type of housing. And to me, and I know that there'll be people that are upset at me about this, but I don't really care. So the issue is, uh, this is, I think, an ideal place to to put this uh, this proposal, this uh, type of housing and, you know, everything always increases traffic. That's always the thing we hear. But, you know, we can deal with those types of things through proper management. And uh, then I say, you know, unlike a factory where they all let out at the same time, these people aren't gonna they'll be coming and going throughout different times. So I just wanted to say kudos to those who will vote for this because I think it's a good project. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am in the green shirt, I think you were next.
Good evening. I'm Stacy Ferron from Goshen. I support this project. It will benefit the neighborhood and the city much more than any greenfield housing far from city amenities would. Development on the outskirts of the city contributes to much more traffic than this project would, given its centrally located site. Those who live in apartments in a central location with good access to pedestrian and bike infrastructure drive less. So I think that the proposed number of parking spaces is more than adequate for this project. It's very hard to find people to develop brownfield sites, especially with housing. And if we don't take advantage of this opportunity, this site may stay vacant for years, contributing nothing beneficial to the city. I think it's important to remember that there is a countywide housing shortage, not just in Goshen, but throughout Elkhart County. If we continue to reject housing projects like this, they will move to Elkhart, where they have been approving multiple projects similar to this one. A yes vote for this project and others like it also says yes to more children enrolling in Goshen schools. Yes, to growing our consumer base, which in turn supports our local businesses. And yes, to growing our workforce that staffs our local businesses and manufacturing. A no vote sends all of these positives elsewhere and leaves us with nothing but a brown vacant field and sends the message that Goshen is not interested in growth or innovation or revitalization. So I encourage a yes vote for the rezoning and PUD. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Taryn McFarlane. I live in the region. And I wanted to say I'm also on staff with the South Bend Elkhart Regional Partnership. And this proposed project is consistent with the regional plan, Smart Connected Communities twenty thirty, which addresses the need for housing of all kinds across the entire region, Elkhart County, Marshall County, St. Joe County, and even Cass and Marion. So I appreciate the council considering this motion.
Thank you. And back here and then I'll go over to you, Aaron.
Hi, my name is Glenn Gilbert and I live in Goshen and in the neighborhood of this project. First, I want to express my appreciation to our elected officials who make hard decisions and um, and go beyond what they might have expected when they took this position. And I also want to express appreciation for the redevelopment commission. I've watched this uh, this liability of Western Rubber dealt with in such a positive way over the years. I I'm deeply appreciative of of how uh, well, they worked with the Environmental Protection Agency to get this building uh, removed. I even though it took a long time, I celebrate the fact that most of the brick and many of the resources were recycled and reused in a positive way. So it gives me encouragement to see that this project is now moving to a state of literal redevelopment. I support the project. I think it is a wonderful way to infill and make good use of the property. I would also echo what I heard in terms of uh, it being an asset to the neighborhood and to the community. So I I encourage you to give it a support. Thank you.
Thank you.
While the next person comes up, all that hard work was Becky's work through the redevelopment commission, getting the grants for that uh, reconstruction of the property.
Aaron, and I saw a hand in the corner, then I'll come up to front here and yeah, I'll get you three here.
Well, this is different. Um, I'm used to being on that side and I'm definitely not used to.
Sir, can you please state your name?
Sorry, Aaron Michler, Elkhart. I should have known that. But I I came to speak on the need for uh, housing in our communities. And while I would love to see uh, everyone here move to my community, I understand that uh, that's and you can't vote against me anyway for saying that, so it's all right. But the reality is lowering housing or the more houses we build, the more units we produce lowers the cost of housing in my community. And Elkhart, like communities throughout our county and the county itself is going through a housing crisis. So the more units we have, the more affordable housing we have, the more we all benefit. Those lowered housing costs will also directly benefit our small businesses throughout all of our communities, uh, our downtowns and encourage more developers to come to our communities because they see that we're welcoming to housing, that we're supporting our small businesses by uh, having folks have more disposable income to support those. So with that said, first, I want to say, Matt, uh, I love as a parliamentarian in Elkhart, I love to see a good uh, vote of reconsideration. So thank you for doing that. Uh, this is a very important thing, not only for Goshen, but for Elkhart as well. Because as I said, more houses will help bring the cost of more housing units will bring that cost down uh, for housing for the rest of us. So with that said, I encourage you all to to vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, hand in the back row there. Um, yeah, sorry. Last name Rogers, but I forgot your first name. I apologize. Ben, thank you.
Notes, so I don't go on too long. Ben Rogers, resident of the city of Goshen. Um, I just want to come here today and say that this is a project that I very much like. As our as our, I'm sorry, that has already been covered. We have a bit of a housing issue in Elkhart County. The supply simply doesn't exist. This really, I feel, is the best case scenario for a property like this. It isn't going to stay a vacant lot for forever. It's simply unrealistic to assume it's going to stay a vacant green field. And when the alternatives would be something along the lines of more commercial development, like a possibly a factory or something like that. A housing development like this, I feel, would be the least intrusive addition to the community. I believe it would be a net positive for the community. You know, I've talked to a lot of people um, around my age that are, you know, under the age of thirty, I guess. Or you call them young professionals or whatever term you want to attach to them. And one of the things that always seems to come up is the lack of housing. I've talked to people that have considered moving here for a job and I've had to explain to them, hey, the the flexible housing situation that you're looking for, it's going to be a bit difficult to find. The expense of housing is growing. Things are getting more expensive and that's simply a market response to lack of supplies. The free market at work and seeing a project like this come forward is the free market responding to that. It's been up to the council to decide how they wish to proceed with those market signals. Another thing that seems to affect everybody and everyone seems to be talking about is property taxes. And you know, property taxes affect more than just people who own property, also affects people that rent property because that cost is passed on. One of the main driving factors behind property tax rates in our area is not property tax rates going up, but the assessed value of those properties going up. The only way for us to really combat that is to engage more supply into the market. And we have some discussion over what kind of housing do we need in Goshen? Do we need low income? Do we need luxury? And I find some of those debates a bit irrelevant, not because they're not good discussions to have, but because we simply don't have any supply at all. We need, once we have a good supply on the market, maybe then we can um, go back to that discussion. But I feel like the main discussion should be the general lack of housing in general. We just need more of it. I feel that the the commercial, uh, potential commercial space in something like this is is a net positive as well. It is interesting seeing a city like such as Mishawaka brag about their mixed use development. And I feel like something like this is a good step towards that. It also provides additional economic encouragement to make sure that the project stays up to date. In closing, I just want to say I appreciate uh, the council's reconsidering of this issue. I feel it's an important one. I feel it's an important discussion to have. I believe the issue of urban density and housing is one of the most important issues that we face in our community and throughout, I guess, our entire region. I'd appreciate a yes vote on this project. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kyle Stockdale. I just want to um, both voice my support for this um, housing development. I'd like to echo um, what the last speaker said regarding people under thirty who are looking for housing in this community. I fall under that category of being under thirty and I know a lot of people, uh, my peers who are looking to move to this area and are really struggling to find anywhere to live. So um, I see that as being a really really big positive for my peers. Thank you.
Commissioner Wirex.
Good evening. Um, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. I have, Suzy Wirek, Commissioner for Elkhart County. I've been aware of this project since it first was applied for on the Ready Grant. I am the Elkhart County's Commissioners' representative of the Southman Elkhart Regional Partnership. And it is one of many projects that was used to submit the application to the state for the Ready Grant. We were very successful as a region in obtaining that grant for $50 million. Elkhart County has come together with the region and the region has consistently been successful in pulling great projects together and getting some of that state money back in the area. I apologize for not coming to speak earlier. As is mentioned from everyone else in the room, not only is there a national shortage of housing, there's a local shortage of housing and I honestly anticipated that it would at least pass the council for a development standpoint. So I'm here today to speak in favor of this as an economic development tool. We are constantly looking for various types of workers, various types of developments. We want things to subsidize our tax roll, but more importantly, we want diversity in offerings in our areas, residential, manufacturing, commercial, all types of things. Mixed-use structures are a great way to treat densely populated requirements, whether it's residential and commercial alongside of manufacturing. Looking at this project and looking at the neighborhood, I drove around multiple times critically looking at what was in the neighborhood and this project would offer some additional housing and would definitely clean up some of the spaces around there. This project is done very tastefully. It is good housing, not the low-end workforce housing. And I commend you for bringing this back up and giving others that were like myself, a little sleepy on the opportunity to speak. The amendments make this a stronger project and you listened to the public and you did what was necessary to at least invoke additional conversation. I encourage an additional support for this project. But again, this is one step forward for economic development and development of Elkhart County. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, I keep seeing your hand. I'm keeping track here.
Hello, everybody. The first thing is I want to thank you very much for.
Please state your name, sir.
Oh, Paul Stury, Goshen, Indiana. And the first thing I want to do is thank you for the bipartisanship and working together as a team because that's something that's really important in government, all government. And also I want to say thank you, and actually I want to say as soon as I heard the vote was down last time, I contacted Don because he's my friend. And so I thank you, Don. And I really want to say that I applaud this location because it's a brown's field and we need to utilize brown's fields as much as possible and take those places over to make sure that they are utilized instead of being a toxic area. And then last but not least, I'm an environmental educator. And I really want to say that I am in full support of all the green and sustainable ways that the developer has thought about with the solar and the previous pavement and other ideas that I think are going to be spectacular for the neighborhood. I also do want to say thank you for listening to the community because that's incredibly important as governmental. I don't think you're oligarchic, but I think you are a council that hears and listens and sometimes doesn't hear and listen. And so that's very important that you did listen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I saw Mrs. Torres and I'll come up to you, Brianna.
Marilyn Torres, I live within four blocks of the project. I want to begin by thanking Councilman Schrock for reconsidering this ordinance, for listening to the community and for consulting with the developer to amend the plan according to those concerns. So thank you. Now this evening, you need to decide whether or not to support this ordinance. Well, I have read the plan and the amendments and there's a lot of information that I don't really understand. But what I do understand is that Goshen has a housing crisis that must be addressed immediately. This summer, I am working at the Cora Dale House, formerly known as the Elkhart County Clubhouse. We are a community of support for people with mental illness. One of the toughest issues our members face is finding housing in Goshen. It becomes nearly impossible for them to stay employed or to address their mental health issues when they don't have reliable housing. I'm also a member of Faith Mennonite Church. We own two houses on Seventh Street where we allow people dealing with housing insecurity to stay for roughly three months until they can find permanent housing. Unfortunately, in Goshen, people often need more time than that. So we always have a waiting list of people looking for a safe place to stay. What I wish we were building is more low-income housing, but that is not what is on the table. Instead, we have a project that addresses these concerns by having units available at 60% of the area median income. Also, people may vacate less expensive housing and move into this new complex, which would open affordable housing for those who need it. This apartment complex is not my ideal solution to our housing crisis, but it is a viable one. So regardless of your ideal for what this project should be, please vote yes for this ordinance because it's good for Goshen.
This next speaker is on the redevelopment commission, for those of you who may not know.
My name is Brienne Brenneman. As Councilman Weddle just said, I'm on the redevelopment commission and I teach public health. And so that's really a framework that I use and you'll see that come out. And so I have also specialized in understanding the ways our built environment, such as housing impacts the health of communities. And I know that that is something that the city is starting to really think about. And so I am supportive of this project for three main reasons. And the first, which keeps being restated, is that we have a demonstrated lack of housing availability for all income levels in Goshen. And we have people renting low-quality housing who could afford quite higher rents when, but there just is nothing available. And I have a colleague who just started at Goshen College and she's renting in Warsaw because there was nothing available here. These apartments will be affordable, which for just everyone, taking one-third or less of people's monthly incomes for people in Goshen, working jobs in industry, schools, and healthcare, which are some of our biggest local industries. And the project is centrally located to many of these places of employment, which gives people the opportunity to use active transportation, such as walking and biking. I also have really appreciated the ways the developers have worked with members of redevelopment commission and city council to thoughtfully integrate strategies for managing stormwater, parking, and noise pollution. Growing traffic will need to be managed as Goshen continues to develop. And that takes a coordinated effort from many city departments and should not be a project-by-project issue. And I'm really committed to continuing to partner with city council on thinking about strategic ways to manage traffic as we hopefully grow the population here in Goshen. So in conclusion, this project provides necessary housing for our community and promotes access to housing for many, many individuals and families. Thank you.
Good evening. John Hunzberger, resident of Elkhart. I know many of you. I'm with the, I represent the Elkhart County CVB. We love talking about our communities and as a former resident of Goshen, Goshen's awesome. I have to just repeat that over and over again to everyone. You know, we talk to visitors about all of our communities, but an important part of that is talking about a quality of place, the place where we live. You know, I had an opportunity to look over the plans from the last meeting and hearing what the recommendations are moving forward. I'm really excited that, Councilman Schrock, that you did decide to bring this back forward. I can't say enough about how important housing is. I mean, I think everyone here, those who've spoke before me, have many great numbers to talk about. But it really is an important issue to talk about how housing affects talent attraction and retention if we don't have the quality of housing for young people or people in transition, maybe even older people who want to downsize. We need all sorts of sizes of units. I think this is an excellent project that can afford that for a range of different residents. So the only other thing that I want to say is that I just want to applaud the council and staff on how they have worked with the developer and also listening to the residents on this project. Really, sometimes going through a project like this can be a bit tough. It's an iterative process that can, you know, sometimes get a little bit scratchy. But I think on the back end of this, I think that it really does produce a better project that we can all be proud of. So I would just encourage this council to vote yes on this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Les Eager. A lot of people know me. Mr. Schrock, your first vote was correct. I understand all the arguments you've been hearing about shortage of housing. That's true. It's, and all their arguments sound good. But there's only one problem. None of these people live in that neighborhood. I do. And I understand. When you look at this project and you look at all the concessions that we had to give it in order to put it on that piece of property, it's too big of a project for that piece of property in the first place. I think that was brought out in the first meeting back, what, the sixth or whatever it was. That you all sat there and said that it was too big of a project for, we need housing, it's true. But that piece of ground would probably, this whole project does not fit in our neighborhood. Archaeologically, I mean, the buildings are bigger than everything. It just doesn't fit in a neighborhood that's built with single-family dwellings. If you were talking about single-family dwellings in that place, maybe along with smaller rental units like already down Ninth Street, it would be a better program if you're insisting on putting a housing on that property. I understand what these people are all saying, but it doesn't fit in that area. Then the other concern I had, even the last time I spoke to you guys, was the way it's financed. And you guys missed it here on the 17th, you got, took again. These developers and industries have figured out how to tap into our public coffers and they're doing it again on this one. It's time to call it stop. And then the other thing is, I heard a lot of comments about how you all listen to the people. Well, as you already heard once tonight, we in the neighborhood don't want it. It disrupts. I'm not against change as long as it's good, you know? But it disrupts our neighborhood. If you come back with likely development that fits in the neighborhood, yeah, I'll go along with it. But this project, those three things, it's too big for where it's at. The financing of it, I don't think we should, if housing is that great, and I understand we've got some industry that's bringing people in from the south, they can pay for them to come up here to work, but they don't provide housing for them. But these same industries are experiencing benefits from tax breaks and TIF and all that stuff. Why don't they take some of that tax money and help build housing for them people?
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Glenn, I might come up here and then over to you. Sorry, I'm sorry. I meant you're next. I apologize.
There's no more spaces to write other than my name, so we're done, right?
Seriously, Glenn, is there not enough space anymore?
Well, there's other page, no, that's, nope, there's other pages.
There's another page.
Glenn, all Goshen. It's not my neighborhood, but I do have some concerns. My concerns is, the one meeting that I did come to, they listed off all the variances that would have to be issued. Problem I have with variances, one or two I don't have a problem with, but you get a whole list of them. And then the next guy comes up and says, yeah, I know that I'm at five foot and I should be at 20 foot. And you know, that's a little closer to the road than it should be, whatever. And redevelopment or the county or the city council says, no. Well, you gave it to the other guy. So I guess I'll get a lawyer and we'll see what happens. Win, lose, or draw, I'm still paying for it as a taxpayer. Somebody's gonna pay the lawyers to fight that out. So inconsistency, when you start giving a lot of variances, you've just changed the rules. In my neighborhood, redevelopment had two lots. They offered it to the neighborhood. You know, they let us know through the Neighborhood Association that it was available. They wanted $20,000 a lot. They gave it to Habitat. Where I'm sure they didn't pay $20,000 a lot for it. And then when they built the house, the only way they could get the two houses in, because small lots, one of the houses faced a different street than Hickby. And they went to Habitat, went to the city and said, hey, can we have the address changed over to the other street? Summer, winter, whatever it is. It's an alley.
Does this have to do with this project?
Yes, it does.
Okay, just checking.
The answer was that would be $1,500. The mailboxes are on Hickory, both of them, even though one of the streets are out. The city is flexible to a point and I think that that was been one that could have been relieved, but that's a variance. Too many variances on this one. The list was very long. I don't know how many have been changed with all these amendments that have gone through, but setbacks are there for a reason. Thank you. I'll change the page.
Andrea, then I'm gonna come over to front row over here.
We got enough for 60. Yep. Like, oh, sorry. You do your thing.
Another redevelopment commission member.
Andrea Johnson, Redevelopment Commission. When this project was first brought in front of redevelopment, I have to say I had some reservations, just like a lot of people, parking, the density of the project, traffic. I asked some questions. The mayor and the developer were very good at reassuring me. I think that Mr. Schrock's amendments, Councilman Schrock's amendments are wonderful. They make the project much better. I think in the end, this project will benefit that neighborhood. And yes, we're going to be doing some improvements on sidewalks and things like that. I think, I think with the benefit for. I think, I think with the benefit for housing. And what it will do for that piece of property, I hope you will support this. Thank you.
Uh, my name is Peter Miller, um, and I'm here in support of this uh proposal. I just want to tell a short story about trying to find housing for my mother-in-law. Um, so my wife's parents are in their seventies. They live in rural Iowa. We'd like them to move to Goshen so they don't hurt themselves in the middle of a farm land. In rural Iowa. Um, so for the last couple of years, we've been trying to find uh housing for them because we want to keep them out of a nursing home as long as we can. Um, so I have a Zillow alert set up for anything within kind of a walking distance of our house. I get an alert maybe once every two or three months. It's terrible. Uh, we went in, we found a perfect place, actually. Unfortunately, we got outbid on it. Um, but we were talking to Realtor who is selling the house and she said at the time, there were seventy-five houses on the market in the entirety of the county. Um, so the housing market is just extremely terrible um for getting people into the neighborhood for where we are. And I'm, for our experience, um. Like I said, my my in-laws are in their seventies. It's extremely hostile to ask them to drive five and a half hours. Once every other month to look at a house and then drive back. Um, and and then also additionally have to uh have your bids in within three days. I I mean, it's, it's a really toxic market to be trying to buy into right now. So I for one, and super excited about the notion that more housing could be added to the uh the housing stock in Goshen. Um, the other thing I want to just raise, uh, which is, um. Now, I'll preface this by saying I'm a software engineer, not a uh urban planner. Um, but one of the things I've fallen into during the pandemic is video essays about zoning, uh, which is kind of a. Uh, we deal with pandemic on our own terms, I guess. Um, but uh, one of the things that's really interesting is. Um, the whole notion of R1 housing, um, it's actually really expensive for cities to maintain. Um, so, um. Whereas, uh, M1, which is my understanding is what this is zoned, is uh. When cities like balance the budgets of where their tax revenues are coming in versus what they have to be spending on infrastructure. M1 zoning blows everything out of the water. Um, R1 zoning sucks down money. Uh, uh, like a, I don't know. Anyways, I'm bad at analogies on the uh fly. But the point being that like, if we want to think about like, what does sustainable development mean for the future of Goshen? And how do we keep being able to pave our roads that we have? Um, a higher number of people per mile that you have to maintain, a higher number of people per like sewer line, per uh. Power lines that you have to, like, it is expended, like, we have to invest money for every single detached family home that we put in. In ways that when you have denser housing, the city wins out and that gives us more money to spend on nice amenities. Um, like, a thing I spend a lot of my time doing is rollerblading down, uh, anyways.
Thank you. Yeah, AJ.
Hi, my name is AJ Delgado. Uh, President Weddell may speak um without time in my CRD capacity first.
Uh, we'll have to keep it all within the same.
Okay, I'll just go fast then. Hi, I'm AJ Delgado. Um, the first thing that I want to mention are um the angles of this that I want to talk about as the community relations director. So thinking about the way that this impacts um protected classes. So as um a few people have mentioned before, this isn't specifically affordable housing, but there's not going to be affordable housing if there's no housing. So adding more housing to the market increases the chances for affordable housing, which is critical for a number of groups. So low-income folks simply can't afford housing that's not affordable. That's just a sentence. Um, aside from that, there's also folks who are on fixed income or who rely on certain government assistance to make. Um, all their payments at the end of the month, including elderly on fixed income and people who are differently abled. Also protected classes that are not able to access housing if we can't make sure there's enough housing so that can be affordable housing. And then going beyond that, thinking about the way that that impacts um. How this becomes a women's issue and an intimate partner violence issue. People can't afford to leave if they can't afford to leave their abuser. And so, again, affordable housing becomes this issue that allows for people to be able to reorganize their social lives in ways that they can separate from. Abusive situations. Stepping away from specifically how this impacts um protected classes, thinking about the the housing thing. I'm so happy that the horse has already been beat. There's just no housing supply. Buying or renting is an entire quest to find a unit, and once you find one, it is not affordable. Thinking about the density of um this housing. Uh, is critical in the lens of thinking about Goshen's growth. It grows, its growth into the future is going to be about density. We know mixed-use um buildings increase pedestrian traffic. So in certain ways, having a bunch of housing in one place is going to increase the rate at which people walk. Which is going to decrease the number of people in cars to begin with. Um, sort of balancing out the um concerns about traffic and parking. We also know that increased foot traffic increases um uh walk-in footsteps to our mom-and-pop shops. So that increases the economic viability of our storefronts downtown and throughout the city. And another thing I want to mention is that all of our neighbors in Goshen deserve effective public accommodations. Um, thank you for what you were mentioning about zoning, thinking about deploying services like uh parks and water, gas. Um, and uh new trolley lines, having dense um urban places means that the taxpayers can deliver a higher service for. The city can deliver a higher service per tax dollar. Additionally, on this walkability and public services, improved quality of life. Last fall, we had experts come in from the University of Indiana to talk about um talent, becoming a talent destination. And they talked about how tax incentives and job initiatives are good for economic growth, but even better than that is quality of place.
Thanks.
Okay.
My name's Linda Ortman. I live on eight twenty South Eleventh Street, a block away from this project. Uh, all I've heard about is you got an empty lot and you need something to do with it. Why not put housing in there? That whole neighborhood, the whole street of Plinett Avenue is so congested, especially work traffic and people going, getting off work at noon. Um, it's backed up toward Fifteenth Street at least, so it's just gonna add more congestion. Add more people, different people in the neighborhood. And if you guys are worried about an empty lot, want something to do with that one, just plant trees. You know, I've not heard one thing about the environment. It's about more people, more housing, more of this, more of that. It doesn't make any sense, you know? We're supposed to be helping the environment too, not just ourselves. But I don't mind changes, just when it gets thrown in our faces is what I don't like. And basically, that's what's going on here. I already said what I said before about the plate, you know, I was staying up here the last time, but it's, I just don't think it's a good idea. For the whole neighborhood, let alone that end of town. There's a lot of people that's lived there for Booker years. And you're forcing them to make a drastic change and it's just not right. Why don't you guys just plant trees? Unless the property is not good enough to let a tree grow on. I don't know all the chemicals that's put in there. It's hard telling, but I thought maybe that'd be a good idea. Plant trees and we'll park in there or something. I mean, after all, New York's got one. They got a big section there. What's wrong with Goshen doing it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir.
I'm David Pickerman. I've spoke to you guys before. Seems like it's becoming a habit. There's an issue that was brought up to me by some of my union members. I am the union rep there. About the parking on Douglas. And I don't know if this is kosher or not, but I do have a picture of where. The outdoor break picnic table is to Douglas Street showing a full-size pickup truck. And when it was shown to me, it raised the question on. How much space for parking? Or are they just going to use the Douglas Street footprint? Or are they gonna widen it to accommodate? I mean, I know everybody wants bicycles and and things like that. But a lot of people drive pickup trucks, and I would like to present an exhibit. That mainly a picture of that, of a pickup truck. Very close to the outdoor picnic table at the back door of the Gleason plant facing Douglas. That's my concern.
Yeah, Mr. Pickerman, um, if you present it to the council, we'll just have to allow the clerk treasurer to keep it for the record if that's okay.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, if you want to hand it to Council President Weddell, he can pass it around and then we'll make sure the clerk treasurer has it at the end. Thank you.
To me, it brings up a safety issue of, okay, everybody has an oops in traffic. But that truck in the picture is very close to a picnic table that's been there for years. Even before when I was employed there. And that's my issue is, you know, when we're talking about the plans. Are we going to make that area not a street anymore and a parking lot or is there a way that maybe we? We can make it a little safer for the people because in the summertime. Especially with the heat, a lot of the employees go out the backside to that picnic table, and I'm concerned for their safety. You know, that that parking, I don't know, I mean. I've talked about the projects for my members. I'm also an elected official too, and I'm just listening to my people. Thank you.
Thank you. You were, yes, sir.
I'm Kyle Richardson. I live on Seventh Street here in Goshen, uh, about four blocks from this project. Um, I'm very excited about this project. I'm I'm very strongly for it. Uh, I've been up and I've spoken in favor of it a few times. I was not at the the meeting where uh it was voted down. And uh, I was, I was shocked and devastated when I heard the news that, you know, this is going to be a vacant lot for another decade. I'm I'm a very appreciative of Counselor Shrock of bringing this back forward. If your amendment, I I strongly urge you to vote in favor of this project and it brings, I'm I'm not going to harp on, I think a lot of points have been made. But it's, we need housing, uh, desperately need housing, uh, not dense urban downtown housing is is uh. The best way to do that without adding traffic. I very strongly support this project and I urge you to vote yes.
Thank you. Uh, council members, whenever we get close to the hour mark on taking public input, I always check in with you about timing. So I'm just gonna check in with council members about.
Has it been an hour?
It's, it's, we're coming up on an hour. We're not quite there yet, but I wanted to check in just so we give a warning for last few comments if that's what's gonna happen.
We've had twenty-two speakers just.
Okay.
As a reference point.
Okay, all right. Yeah, how roughly how many more would like to speak? Okay, so it looks like we have about ten more. You want to do ten more? Okay, so, um, if I could see those hands, yeah, let's go to the blue shirt right here.
My name's Christine Borzenato and I'm from here in Goshen. I live catty corner from the development. Um, I'm kind of shocked right now because of the comment that was just made. We were told that the people that hadn't talked could come up and speak. And now you're saying it's been an hour, so that means people that haven't spoke yet, that had spoke before. Aren't gonna get a chance. I mean, the positive reinforcement have come out of the woodwork tonight. Now I understand why you wanted people that haven't spoke to speak first. Because they were all for this development. My no is not a no because of the development. My no is a no. I'm not ignorant. There's too many apartments. There's too many people that's gonna be living in that small area. We need apartments. We need living. I know that. But we do not need that many in that one small area. There's multiple areas in the city of Goshen to build more apartments on. Why can't that happen? Why not build a few here? And a few on another area. I mean, we're the jail you said, you say, oh, that downtown, downtown. That would be a perfect area to bring money into the businesses down downtown. What's gonna happen when that courthouse leaves? You're gonna lose lots of business for the downtown. If there's an apartment building built across the street from it. That's gonna make up for it. And if you're gonna go four stories there. That would be a perfect place for it. I just, I I, I'm very angry about the discussion that was just said.
Well, if I could just explain that, we always check in at the hour mark, and that's exactly why nobody shut it down. That's why we asked how many more people wanted to speak so that we can try and get everybody in, so that that's.
But I understand, everybody that has spoke has been for this and. I don't assume anything. I presume the biggest share of the council knew that. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, we kept calling on people who haven't spoken in the previous meetings and um it's not about. Yeah, that's, we were trying to make sure they had an opportunity in public. Mr. Malone, Mr. Malone, you're next, and then we'll go. Mr. Malone, please. Okay, you'll be after her then.
Rose Rio from Goshen. I finally decided to quit being silent. I say no. I live on Tenth Street, close to this. So many people that had been for this do not live in the area. And this affects us, you know? Traffic and then the parking on Douglas, I can't see that. Factory is right there, just like he said. You know, how is the parking gonna be next to the factory? I do not understand that. And I don't like the rooftop thing, you know, it's bad enough that there's a bunch of people, a bunch of cars. And then people are up on the rooftop yet, you know, that's not wise. And I guess I still don't understand why this said it was killed last time and then. You know, a council member member could change his mind and bring it back. I guess I still don't understand that. You don't need to explain it to me. I don't understand all the legal mum and jumble. But yes, I'm against this and it's mainly traffic, people close to the factory, close to the railroad tracks. I don't really understand who would want to live there, so please vote no.
Thank you. And on the motion to reconsider. Thank you. And on the motion to reconsider, that's something that Roberts Rules of Order allows us to do. It cannot be any council member. It can only be a council member that voted for the project and wants their vote. So that's, that's the process we're working with. Mr. Malone. That, that's fine. Are you waiting to be last bill? Is that what you want? Just so I know.
My name is Holly Reese. I live at 822 South 10th Street. I am right at the corner. I understand that something should probably go into the Brownfield site. What you are proposing to do to our neighborhood is not the right one. It is too big. The site should be able to fit into the Goshen Building Commission's guidelines, 78 units and no retail. That would fit the space and not having the parking problems. It would also be a better use of this dense area. I have said many times that at certain times, traffic at this corner is a nightmare, a nightmare. With the developers' plans of the four-story retail space coffee shop, you are taking away my husband's and my freedom of sunshine and seeing the sky. Every citizen of America has that right. Our 30 years of paying property taxes should ensure that right. You hold the power to make the right call of using the correct guidelines, not grant all the variances of this. You hold the cards. Mr. Anderson sees that he can make a big profit from this. You have his name on a sales agreement. If he wants it that bad, then he can change his pretty drawings and plans to fit the site. 25 years of tax abatement. I probably won't be alive by the time you get to collect property tax on this site. But I know you were willing to use our tax dollars to help fund Mr. Anderson's property, police, fire, ambulance. I appreciate the fact that you have talked of putting a new street with curbs and sidewalks. Ooh, nice. Unfortunately, we, the property taxpayers, are paying for the gift you want to give to us. I don't want to pay for that. I have tried to not be emotional in this matter, but let's face it, I am emotional and I'm tired of the BS. Now I am here to tell you my truths. You should all be ashamed of yourselves. The city of inclusiveness is only inclusive for the people you choose. Not all of us are included. Megan, you are the worst of this because our street is in your district. You couldn't be bothered to come talk to us, any of us on the street. Matt did.
Our, our, our council rules say that we can't attack any council members. Just that's the rules.
She should be ashamed. She's, she's supposed to represent us.
You're not to single people out.
We are, we are taxpayers and we're not being represented by anybody. Mr. Schrock, I point him out because he was kind enough to come talk to us. He spent quite a bit of time at our house and he listened. I know he's already made up his mind. He talked to Mr. Anderson before he came and talked to us. Deal was probably pretty much done at that point. Multiple people mentioned that the community members were consulted when this was first started. What community? It wasn't the actual homeowners who live on 10th Street, probably the community that would agree with your agendas. We who are directly affected by this mess are being taxed without representation. Once again, you should all be ashamed. This is the greed of Goshen and Mr. Anderson, he gets greed too, to push aside the guidelines for a smaller complex and use us to track tax, the property taxpayers. I will end on this. You shall reap what you sow.
Thank you. Mr. Malone. Okay, I'll stop calling it. Yeah, in the back, Kathleen.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kathleen Jones, and I want to voice my support for the project. I am a neighborhood resident. In the proposed project neighborhood, I live about four blocks from the proposed project. I was, I've been really encouraged by Councilmember Schrock, your coordinated effort to work with the developer and others to think about ways to improve the project, the bipartisanship, the compromise. It's just been really encouraging to see. So I want to thank you for that. So, yeah, as a neighborhood resident, my family and I welcome the development that will help the city grow and thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim, I'm gonna go across the back row there. Yeah. Tom, did you have your hand up too? Okay, sorry, I missed that. I'll get to you.
Tim Noel, Goshen, 11 Seventh Street. Councilman Schrock, nice job. You managed to bring two city or county commissioners, a county council member, a state rep, a former mayor. And by the looks of it, we wouldn't have even had our meeting tonight if you had not done this. So way to bring a lot of people together here. Congratulations. And it's a great example of dialogue and trying to improve a situation. And I didn't mean that as a negative or anything to you, Matt. My concerns continue to be on the density of this project. I think the developer has looked to continue to make this a better project, and I commend him for continuing the dialogue on that. You know, I tried to look at the numbers a little bit, and I just shared a little bit with John that I still felt it was too big. And he said, well, if it goes too much smaller, the numbers don't work, which that sounds like it's a money issue. And perhaps maybe if the county commissioners brought a sack of more money with them, then we wouldn't need as dense of a project. And we could bring this down into somewhere the 85 or 90, within a 10% tolerance of what a conscious decision from our planning people put together as far as what's an appropriate level of density for this size of a project that I assume was approved by the plan commission and the county council probably approved those guidelines that we work with under the city. Think we're all have a goal to make Goshen a good place to live, provide housing for people. But it has to benefit not just the people coming in, but also the people there. And I think this project still puts a lot of infringement on those most affected. I feel bad for those people right on 10th Street. I'm a few blocks away. Probably would be a little bit affected by the traffic. I would also encourage our redevelopment commission to do a better job of completing the projects you've previously approved over on the Mill Race and on Third Street, projects that have been approved and sit empty. What, how much housing could be there if you put better agreements forth and require developers to start within six months or forfeit some sort of money? So thank you. Have a nice evening.
Councilman Stump, and then back to the back row.
I'm Tom Stump. I live at 823 South 7th Street, about three blocks from this project. And I'm directly downstream as far as the traffic goes because it's coming down Plymouth, and I live right on the corner of Plymouth and 7th on its way to Main Street. These amendments that have been presented to you, I don't see that they make much difference. The only thing they did is give the developer 35 more parking spaces on Douglas, which he didn't have before until you proposed it. So basically, you're still giving the 11 zoning clearances or whatever they are to him. And, and, and you know, that's not been done in a long time in the city of Goshen, probably never. I agree with the gentleman had the best points. I don't know his name. I'm looking down here for it. But he's sitting right behind the former mayor Kaufman. I have made some very good points. One of the, the points he made was it's, it's too dense a project for this area. This is once one of the most densely populated areas in the city. The neighbors really don't want this, and there's a huge benefit by taxes that are going to be put into this project, the roughly $5 million of TIF, which actually he's, the developer said that wasn't the city, the taxpayers' money, but really it is. Because if somebody else went in there, you'd get that TIF money right now. You wouldn't have to wait 25 years to get some portion of the TIF. You'd be getting it right now. So that's tax money. I don't know, 5 million or whatever. Regional cities, I heard, is going to be kicking in four or 5 million. I don't know what the financing that he's going to get from the federal government or the state, how much money or benefit in taxes he's going to get there. But this is a huge, huge taxpayer expenditure for this project. So you need to consider that. We haven't talked about that much. I do support housing, and I think we need housing, but I support single-family housing. And I think if the city and the county officials were more agreeable to single-family housing, we would have more single-family housing in Goshen as well as the county. And so I think the two commissioners here should think a little bit about that before they start talking about what should happen in Goshen. Also, in 21 years of being on the city council, 20 years on the Goshen Redevelopment Commission, 10 years on the county plan commission, 10 years on the county council. I've never voted for a project that has this many neighbors upset about it going in, never, in those amount of time, in that amount of time.
Thank you, Tom. Back there with the hat. Yes, sir. Can't see your face, sorry.
Okay, so I'm Lucas Bonchiger-Wait. I'm at 117 Canal Street at the moment. Jeremy, you said that we couldn't address or single out council members when.
Just get in the motives or call someone out, but you can ask them a question if you want.
If it's positive, can we say that? Is that fine?
I, I.
My recollection of the rules is someone else can, the point is you're talking to the council as a body. I mean, we, we are one unit as we cast our votes. And it is sort of to dissuade the individual calling out of people. That's what our rules are for and because they can be, that can be misused. I mean.
Yeah, I understand. This is my first meeting. I have not been to a council meeting before. I also didn't think I was going to be speaking, but I was standing in the back for an hour and a half, thought I might as well. I just want to thank you all for all your hard work on this. Looking around, I'm, I think I'm maybe the youngest person here. I am a Goshen College student. I'm a junior right now. And I just want to voice or repeat the concern that's already been brought up for people who are under 30, under 25, under 20, who are from Goshen and would like to live here in the future. We need, we need housing desperately, to the point that thinking about post-college, post-trade school, or even high school, whatever it is, it would be fiscally irresponsible to try to live here or try to get up, get up on your feet in this area because housing and cost of living is far too high. And I see this project as a way of opening up possibilities to bettering the housing market for this region and in Goshen specifically. And I want to thank you all for all your hard work on this.
Thank you. Standing up in the back row and then, yeah, thank God.
My name is, my name is Dirk Oyer. I attended the, some of the prior city council meetings and the planning commission meeting on this project. And I'm not a resident of the neighborhood. I live on the west side of Goshen. But I'd very much like to be a resident of the neighborhood, and this project would allow that and allow me to find better housing in Goshen. I was disappointed with the council's previous denial of this project, especially when they then approved more industrial development, increasing the need for housing. And I, I don't think density and capital A affordable or lowercase a affordable housing can be four-letter words when we talk about more housing in Goshen. At the meetings with the residents and others, I heard a lot of complaints about traffic, but I think this location is uniquely suited to reduce traffic with how close it is to downtown and the businesses and the bike infrastructure nearby. The, I, I can't think of many other uses of the space that would generate less traffic and still provide a significant benefit to Goshen like this project would with its housing that we, again, desperately need. If you might have picked up on that, just. And I, I do want to thank you all for working to address the concerns and working with the developer and reconsidering this proposal. And ultimately, I hope you will approve it, but thank you all for your work on this.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sawyer Landis Piddle. I live on Seventh Street, about four blocks from the property in question. I did come to support the proposal today, and I've heard a lot of concerns about the traffic through our neighborhood from people that oppose it. In part of the amendments and that discussion, I heard conversations about the sidewalks around, if they would be good enough, if there are enough of them. And several people, including Derek, just now have mentioned the bike infrastructure nearby. I do bike on Plymouth a lot. And I urge the council to ensure that the walking and especially cycling infrastructure on the property is adequate. The Plymouth bike lane does not run that whole length of Plymouth. So you're on it and then you're off of it. And in general, it's crumbling. So I would, I mean, a major positive that people have been bringing up seems to be the fact that the traffic could be lower if walking and cycling infrastructure is good. So I would ensure you to, or I would urge you to ensure that it is good and perhaps improve from how it is now. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Katrina Graber. I live at 524 East Douglas. I am directly across Ninth Street from the project. I also work at the high school. And my concern when it first came forward was the overall size. I think we do need housing. I'm kind of in a position where I'm torn between everybody in the room because I agree with everyone's statements about the housing needs. But mathematically, looking at this, we were short 30 parking spaces per the ordinance before. We're still short 21 spaces. Unless you count the city spaces that, living directly there, I don't know if you can fit that many cars in that space and have them be able to back out and actually get in and out of spaces unless you widen something. I guess I hope that something can happen with the project. The amendments that Matt made, I think, are wonderful. I'm glad the setback's a little further. I'm glad they reduced a little bit of the parking. Anything that could get it closer to what other people have said, where it's, you know, a small deviance instead of a, you know, going from 78 apartments to 136 apartments, it's almost double. Anything that could make it closer to actually fitting and not needing 10 or 11 variances, I would be totally in support. The way it is right now, the amendments make it better. I'm still on the fence on whether it can really fit. And that's just knowing that leaving the high school, there's a ton of traffic every day, and it's just the train stop, the train blocks all the time. Shankland Park's going to be closed until the crossing there's going to be closed in November. The just, I don't know. Everything's always happening at some point, and anything that we can do to make this actually fit the space, I'm all for it. So I just encourage you to consider any additional amendment that could make it palatable for both sides. Thanks.
Thank you.
William Malone. I previously signed in. Okay. Gleason, Goshen Manufacturing, we've been here for 132 years. Our buildings are built on the property lines right on 10th Street. We have to offload trucks on 10th Street, as we've been doing for 132 years. Nothing but cornfields after all these.
There are no houses, okay? So we have to offload trucks on 10th Street, blocking traffic. We're going to start using the safety cones to make sure that people see the trucks, but we offload trucks on 10th Street. Now you're exacerbating the traffic situation all the more. Talked to the man about it already, but you know, I have no guarantees that someday the city's going to say you can't do, I can't operate without doing that. You're, you're running me out of town. We have 125 jobs, non-RV related. I emphasize, non-RV related. And now we're coming into a great big downturn on RVs. Our average wage is $23.25 and our minimum starting wage is 15 bucks, okay? The 125 jobs, been there for 125 years, 132 years. And it just seems like you have no concern. This density is way too much. We're not against housing in the area. And when the two commissioners were here, why don't they talk about the fact that there's a property downtown where the jail used to be? No one's volunteering to make that sure with housing. With such a critical need for housing, why aren't we using the property that we have close to downtown? And then that, where the jail used to be, they're also at the property that they want to put an ice skating rink, which is more important, an ice skating rink or housing? Across from the Hawks building, there's plenty of room to put this frigging building right there. Why isn't it there? No, we got, we have 20 people on the committee wanting to put an ice skating rink in there. What's more important is ice skating rink or housing? People, the city isn't doing their job getting housing put in. None. Waiting for developer to come by and take advantage of a brownfield project so you can get $5 million in his fund for the fact that it's a brownfield project, your field? No, it just doesn't make sense. We're not doing our jobs to let this kind of thing happen. No, no, this is the, my factory runs six days a week, three shifts a day. We have noise. We're going to have more noise. We've been a little bit slow in the past because of the COVID type stuff. We're getting busier. We're going to punch presses pounding through the night. Not once, even though I've talked about noise, not once has the developer, anyone come to me about the problem of noise. Not one person. Have you, the developer? No, no, you haven't. So how are you going to handle the noise that's going, happening at 2:30 in the morning? And people parking on the street right 15 feet from my, my break table is. The mayor's putting public parking right next to my employee break area on purpose. And so how is, how is that, not, I don't understand. You're trying to crowd the company out. They've been here for 32 years. So the employee parking was the first thing I talked about on Douglas Street. Sooner or later, the railroad is going to put dual line in and our public, my employee parking on Ninth Street will disappear. Okay. On finishing, there are two things. We have never once asked for or received any handsout from the government. We pay our own property taxes.
Your time's up, Mr. Malone.
Okay, and then on, one other thing, you know, we, we had leased.
Mr. Malone, everybody else has respected the time limits, please. Thank you. Next speaker, please. We'll have to give that to the clerk treasurer too and.
My name is Barb Hassan. I am working very hard to contain my emotions. I recognize that this is a very emotion-filled subject. I hope that everyone here can think about the benefit to our community and the future of our community. I do want to thank the council for reconsidering the amendments and I fully support that. I also would like to say, my understanding is that a councilperson who submitted those amendments was under a lot of pressure and I would say bullying by members of the community, which I think is very unwarranted. And I hope that that can stop. I believe that the developer has answered questions about parking on Douglas. I believe the developer has answered questions about tree planting, about water runoff. I think the developer has done a wonderful job of coming back and working with the council on this. I also think that the concepts of bike paths and walking are very much consistent with what people in the future will be doing more of. I also want to say there was some very nefarious signage that was put up along Ninth Street, along Plymouth Avenue. I personally talked with some people on Ninth Street who did not approve of signs being placed in their yard that talked about the greed of the city of Goshen. I also think that was totally inappropriate for that signage to be in place. So in summary, I just want to thank you and say I, I hope that the project will move forward.
Thank you.
Yes.
That's he. What's up with Morgan?
You are an uncle. Baby girl, 722. Lot of hair. Oh my God, a lot. So yay, we're, he's a great uncle. I'm a great aunt, Nana, whatever. Um, Betsy Schrock, Goshen. In case you don't know who I am, I am Matt's sister. I had a whole list, a whole page of things that I wanted to talk about, that I wanted to share and my husband's like, be calm, be cool. And he knows me better because I'm not. First of all, this has been a really great meeting. So whatever the cause, I applaud your bravery at reconsidering something that's not popular. My issue is, is a couple fold. One is, Western Rubber was on that site for how many years? I respect Gleason being there for a long time, but as my brother, I think, actually pointed out at one of the meetings recently to go on Google Maps and actually look at Gleason over the years and see how they have actually encroached on city property. So for them to say they don't have enough room, let's have them go back to their original guidelines and stay there. I'm sorry. I'd also like to know who is the CEO of Gleason Products? I can't find it online because I really want to point out to them how their company is being represented. Um.
Yeah, I think we need to keep this.
I'm sorry. So the other issue I have is that Gleason has, has been there for a long time. Western Rubber supported 200 to 300 people in that location for many years without any difficulty. No traffic issues, no accidents, no problems. So I applaud Matt for bringing this to the table. Hopefully it will serve Goshen in the best way possible. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience? Okay, we'll close public input and come back to the council. Council have a discussion. Do you want to hear from developer? Do you want to take a break? Okay, we're going to take a five-minute recess for, I believe, a bathroom break here. We'll come back in five minutes.
Okay, zoom in and go down to a street. Click on the street. It should give you a little dot, right there. Now go down that picture. Now, over here. Zoom both ways. There's no trash, no garbage. Girl. We knew it was coming, but just the sequence from the name, so nobody still knows the name. Thank you. I get it. I get that. I get it. I don't like changing those people. I understand. I said, as you get, yeah, as I get older, I understand why change needs to happen because I, I don't like changing it. I like the old school stuff, just like everybody else. I like to reminisce. Yeah, I'll show you this. This is Mr. Malone's property. This is, I didn't realize on Google Maps you can actually go, put it back to 2007. This is Douglas Street. Here's the Western Rubber building. And I just couldn't believe how well-kept this property, I mean, it's, it's all the way to the railroad tracks. It's perfectly sterile. I don't know how to operate Brett's. You go there now, now that the railroad crossings blocked, it's all full. Polar graph, garbage, I mean, bad. Can't believe that nobody complains about these products. They probably did at the time. I have nothing against anybody. I have nothing against girl. I don't have anything against these people. Not personally, so. Yeah, this is, this has been an interesting deal for me. Because when I got into this, I'm, I'm, I came in green, 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 green. No history of any political, any. So when I hear these people voice against it, I I hear that stuff. I get it. I get it. I know I'm going to vote, but I still get it. That's why I went really, really, pushed real hard to make sure that those people that do live across the street, they, they get something out of this and this sidewalks and these streets. And Holly Reetha got up and spoke. I spent four hours at their house last Saturday, mostly because I, John Reetha and I, her husband, we were best friends all the way through elementary school. There was just no way she was going to change her mind. I knew it. But we have, we have an agreement. She, she really respected me. Coming to talking to her in this whole, the way, the whole thing about getting together with the community. This was not handled very well. You hear these people say that they didn't, they didn't. Holly didn't. And they live literally right on the corner. They wouldn't have just heard rumors of neighborhood people putting meetings on, but nothing. Talked about this. Yeah, or lack of it. John, the developer, I said this. And so actually Brett and Julia were talking about when these projects come, we got to put a big sign out. We're going to have a meeting. Everybody come to these meetings. I mean, big, big giant, however big we can be. People drive by every day, see that. They'll show up. Especially when you say there's going to be a big, some type of like construction project of some type. They'll come, but people that I talked to like you said, it was all communication. Or lack of it. That bugs me.
Found a little food. I was getting shaky.
Morgan didn't have to wait till, they were talking like she was going to have to wait. Can I see the picture again?
If the council members could take their seat, I'd like to call a meeting back to order. Uncle Schrock, could we take this meeting back to order?
Uncle Schrock.
Uncle Schrock.
I know they're new baby pictures, but. Okay, we're back to, this meeting's back to order and we're with the council discussion. And I think the, I think the council wanted to hear John from you if you had any responses that you felt like you needed to give and then we'll see where the council's at after that.
I'll be brief. You guys have heard me talk a lot over the last couple of months. I just want to echo, thank you. Thank you to Councilman Schrock for bringing this back. I appreciate all the public comment. I appreciate that it was a lot more balanced tonight than it may be three weeks ago. You know, the comment was made that we're getting positive feedback from people who don't live in the neighborhood and negative from people that do. I, I heard half a dozen neighbors that live in the neighborhood that spoke in favor of that, of our project tonight, which I think shows you that there is support in the neighborhood for what we're trying to do here. So I don't know that I have anything else to say. I'm happy to respond to questions that council may have or I'm happy to let you guys vote or discuss amongst yourselves, whatever you need me to do.
Question from somebody. I know that there had been a specific timeline for this project to get started. If it should pass, what is the timeline for people here who would know?
Yeah, so, you know, obviously I pulled back the reins a little bit with my team after a council meeting three weeks ago, but not a lot. We just redirected and started looking at some amendments. We're still looking at having our construction drawings, November, December, and breaking ground in the spring. And we're still on track with our financing, with ready funding, with what we're doing here with the PUD. We're still on track to keep that schedule.
Thank you.
On track means you've gotten the money or still working at getting it?
We're still working towards it. Ready applications will be, if the application is, I think it may be already out and due the 15th of August, so we're pursuing that. The rest of the funding has been secured.
Any other questions from council members for John on the development or do you prefer to go to your discussion? Okay, thank you, John. If there's no discussion from council, are you going to vote?
I'm ready to vote.
I'm ready to vote.
Are we, we would vote on, no, we already voted on the amendments, right?
So the amendments?
Okay. So we're, so we're getting ready to vote unless we have discussion.
We'll be voting on the ordinance as amended.
Okay.
Um, a yes vote would pass this and no vote obviously would, would be, um, yeah.
No, I would like to say a couple of things.
Okay.
Okay. This, um, this, this one has been tough. It's been a tough week, okay? You know, the, the project was a go and then the last city council meeting, I had all these variances and everything and it just seemed like we were giving the developer everything. seemed like we were giving the developer everything. And when I came in here, I didn't expect any votes to change because it was already just Councilman Nisley and I. And it was five to two. And so on the original vote. No, we went, we get through the meeting with the, the TIF and everything, and that was, yes. Yes, sorry. Go back a couple of meetings. Okay, so the last meeting though. You know, I, I struggled with, you know, the hundred percent TIF, and I struggled with all the variance, the variance that we, that we allowed, and I'm gonna assume that the city, if we have to, you know, go with any repercussions for that, that we would go with any repercussions, right? I was worried about future people coming back and saying, hey, you did this, you did that, you did that. So that's, that's gonna be a different problem later on, but this, this, I mean, this, this whole thing is not a Republican or Democrat issue because it's not split on party lines. It just happened to split on party lines last time. Maybe because I had such compelling reasons. I don't know what it was, but Matt, Councilman Shrock came back with a reconsideration. So, you know, this week, you, you think you're coming back with a reconsideration for a reason. Okay, I didn't talk to Matt. I don't know what his vote is. I didn't, you know, I, I don't know what's gonna happen, but I'm assuming that you don't go to all that trouble. And I can count votes. Okay, I'm that, I'm that smart. So anyways, you know, we went to, and the developer came back and we have some concessions, okay? And, and we have this list here from Becky, I think, wrote this list here. So I feel good that we have done something that we can, we got a record of this, then I'm assuming that we will stick by this record because I know Becky. And we'll do the best to fulfill what we need to in the neighborhood. And so we've made some progress. I didn't want to give, nothing against Mr. Anderson. I didn't want to give this project everything. And I wanted to look at maybe what some options would be. And we've come back, we've come back with some that, you know, additional parking spots. They're public parking spots, but it's something that we agreed to that we will get, you know, we will get done. So we got thirty-five right there by that. I don't know how this will pan out. I know change is hard. I know I didn't like Main Street when they went from four lane to two lane, but I like it now. And so, um, you know, I just want to go on record saying we've we've gone from having a project to not having a project to voting again whether we're gonna have a project with some changes. And there's still some other things that have to go through. There's still some hoops they gotta jump through, you know, traffic studies and everything else. And there might be some other things that, you know, we might keep pecking away at this if, if it needs to be pecked away at, but I'm comfortable with what, uh, Councilman Shrock came back with. And, um, it's the best, it's the best we could do. And so that's my position on this whole week of struggles.
I would like to just jump on that one too is, um, it has been a tough week. I have talked to Matt many a times. I do like the concessions that were made. Are they enough? I don't know. Coming in tonight, I was strictly as a vote no. Listening to proposed that Becky gave us or reading that. That was my main concern is, you know, what's gonna happen or what can help the neighborhood? No, I, it's, it's a tough vote. I mean, I, I guess I know where Matt was setting last time. It, it is tough. Because I know we do need the housing. The project, I said earlier, was too big for the area. Not knowing what needed to be cut out, uh, to, to get that down a little bit. If they can get the parking on Douglas, that, uh, was not gonna be bothering Mr. Malone's business there. Um, I would have to say that, um, my vote will probably change tonight.
Councilman Shrock, I wanna I wanna applaud you for your your willingness to come back to us with a with a reconsideration. It is, it is really hard to know. You know, how do we increase affordable housing opportunities? How do we how do we increase the vitality of our community? How do we revitalize neighborhoods? How do we do? You know, how do we provide more housing opportunities and choices for people in our community? And probably, it's been interesting to listen to the, the residents. So I took a lot of notes here. But it's been interesting to hear how much the, uh, residents of the neighborhood and outside of the neighborhood. Sometimes we, we don't always know the benefits of the different types of housing options. And so I, I applaud your work to actually get with the developer, sit down, try to figure it out. And the amendments are not perfect, but I, I think that they are a, a step forward. I have, oh, I've supported the, the project all throughout, and I think it's a good opportunity for us to continue growing. I only say to us as counselors, you know, these are, these are important issues we need to kind of consider, you know, all throughout. And it's just a challenge for myself. When we cast a vote, it's always important for us to to have done, and, and we're always doing the work of trying to understand what's, what's at stake. And we don't always get it right, or we don't always vote how we want to vote, but I, I just want to thank you for doing a little bit more work. And you're modeling for us as other counselors to try to figure out ways when we're not exactly sure. So I you know, I've heard the we this evening, but I want to say the I to you that you took the, the brave step to, to sort of step out. And, and that takes courage. And whether this passes or not, um, I've gained a lot of respect for you in terms of just saying, I'm gonna step out. And these amendments are because of you, and I appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you too.
I guess, you know, I spent eight years on council, and there were several, several of these types of votes that I had to be part of where you go home. Um, once you hear about them, a lot of times you come to the room knowing how you feel like you're gonna vote, and then you hear the public testimony. Um, one of the votes I was part of was one of our overpasses, which tore down several homes. Uh, several of those people had lived there for decades, um, some of them with their family homes. Um, but as a council member, we were responsible for picking the path of the, the, the least destruction, and that's always somewhere. Um, so I, I do know how you guys feel, um, feel for you. I just like to say, I've, I've clearly seen, um, I don't know how this is, I how this vote's gonna go tonight, but I've clearly seen a lot of care on both sides of this um, from the council members. And just for the audience to know too, that when the motion was made to reconsider, um, uh, when that was opened up on that council agenda that evening, that motion has to happen at the meeting, can't be on the agenda. I made a, a request to the council members to not hold any discussion or vote until we could invite the public back to be with us. Um, and they unanimously agreed to table that immediately, um, to make sure that everybody could be in this room. So I do, uh, thank you for the council for making sure that happened as well. So I, I don't disagree that there are gonna be people tonight, um, uh, however this turns out that are happy and unhappy and um, but I do want to commit that staff and I, and, and think I can speak for the council too, will continue with whatever happens, making this the best possible and, and trying to make sure it works for um, everybody involved is, is the best we can. Council President?
I think I stated last time, this has been one of the least desirable votes and topics we've had to deal with. Um, I've, I've been struggling immensely from the time this is before redevelopment commission to the city council and back and back and back again. And I'll be honest with everyone, not only in council, but also in the public here. To a certain extent, first of all, I have zero financial interest in any of this. I don't own any property. I don't own any property adjacent. Uh, but there's a part of me deep inside that feels like a personal conflict with this. Someone who may not be a direct family member, but I consider a family member has very strong opinions about this. And I have struggled immensely with how, how do I handle that? And I feel pretty strongly that I haven't shied away from tough decisions in the past. I'm having a hard time with this one. I really am. And so I want everyone here to know, however I vote, and it may not be any vote for that matter, has nothing to do with the project, has nothing to do with the neighborhood concerns, but it has to do with a really deep personal conflict I have with this. I want everyone to know that that's, yeah, I've been really struggling with that, so.
May, may I ask, as, I mean, are you saying you will, you're gonna recuse yourself on this vote?
I've tried to. I'm not accusing myself, but I'm I have no financial interest in this. I have no direct family member involved in this. But there's this pretty strong, uh, personal conflict I have.
Um, I also wanted to say to, to those of you who are saying you, you might looks like you might be changing your vote. I, I want to also commend you for, I mean, I feel like you held out for good reasons, and I hope that people here who came and spoke understood that you were holding out for them and their betterment, you know, in their community and the fact that we have in front of us what feels like a better reassurance that, that the things that we're all saying that we want to happen in the neighborhood will happen to take into account the concerns expressed. That, I mean, that makes me feel good to be making decisions with you who are listening to that also and looking and, and making decisions based on, on the interests of the people around too.
I, I personally will always try and make the best decision and evaluation, the best evaluation that I can do. And and I know it, it's like threefold. We gotta watch out for the neighbors. We gotta watch out for the district, and we gotta watch out for the city. And it makes, and even a county, if you think about it, but mostly the city is who we represent here at this, at these two tables. So I will spend the time and I will run through it and I make notes and I use my red pen and everything else, but I want to make sure that going, going forward, I just want to make the best decision, and I'm sure all of us do, right? And so, and it was a good public conversation tonight and very respectful. Ninety-five percent of the time.
Yeah, I think input on both sides, questions I've had from people who have, have supported though, they helped me understand the project better. I mean, everyone's engagement makes us all better up here too. So I'm grateful for it.
I just want to say that one other thing that to begin with, I was totally against the financial part of this of going one hundred percent TIF. And with that said, I can guarantee the neighborhood, the people that live in the neighborhood, that I'm gonna keep a very, very close eye on this project if it moves forward, uh, to make sure that you guys are being taken care of too.
I second that.
Any other comments from council members? Okay, just, um, so basically where we are voting on the amendment as amended this evening, uh, we have first reading in front of us. We'll have that vote. Um, this is a zoning issue from plan commission, so we automatically go to second reading. Um, when that happens, we don't have to have any NOS consent on a zoning issue. Um, so just want to make sure council will have, um, uh, two votes here shortly. Is the council prepared to vote?
We are.
We have a motion, a second pass ordinance fifty-one twenty-three as amended. Will the clerk treasurer please call the roll?
Councilor Icorn.
Yes.
Councilor King.
Yes.
Councilor Nisley.
Yes.
Councilor Perez.
Yes.
Councilor Reckhacker.
Yes.
Councilor Shrock.
Yes.
Council President Weddell.
Stane.
That passes six, zero with one abstention. So you can go ahead and introduce second reading.
Please read ordinance fifty-one twenty-three by title only.
Ordinance fifty-one twenty-three, amend ordinance thirty-eleven by Rizonian Real Estate, here and after described and commonly known as six-twenty East Douglas Street. From industrial M-one district to residential R-three district with a planned unit development overlay district to be known as the Aerial Cycle Works PUD.
I move the passive ordinance fifty-one twenty-three on second and final reading.
Second.
The second was by Councilwoman Icorn. This is second and final reading. We're on second, final reading, the same ordinance. Um, we just heard a lot of public testimony, one of, uh, four public meetings now. Does council want to move ahead with the vote or take any comments?
Vote.
Vote.
Vote. Okay, we have a motion as second to pass ordinance fifty-one twenty-three on, as amended, as second and final reading. All those in favor signify by s, I'm sorry. Yeah, clerk treasurer, please call the roll.
Councilor Icorn.
Yes.
Councilor King.
Yes.
Councilor Nisley.
Yes.
Councilor Perez.
Yes.
Councilor Reckhacker.
Yes.
Councilor Shrock.
Yes.
Council President Weddell.
Stane.
That passes six, zero with one abstention. Thank you. Um, that brings us to our elected official reports. Are there any, um, elected official reports for this evening?
Bodie, to alleviate any future concerns with our council rules, I would like to get together with you and put some stronger or more, or less ambiguous language in our council rules for reconsiderations, please.
I guess a good idea.
I want to just, I know, because it, my understanding was always that it was anyway, I just want to make sure we had that kind of clarified.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea. Anytime we come up of one of these things where we rarely use them to make sure we go ahead and identify it once we, um, do. Any other comments from council members? Okay, I'll just, uh, give a real quick report if I could. Um, uh, had my first trip to Washington DC with a servant on the EPA board that I, I serve on as an advisory board now. Um, and, uh, it's all around local government. Um, just, it's about twenty, twenty-five member board. Sorry. Uh, about twenty-five, twenty-five member board, um, but just, it was exciting to hear the amount of, uh, conversation from the EPA about acknowledging, um, the needs of small communities. Um, and we've really been pushing hard on trying to get federal reporting on these federal grants to be more uh, attainable, uh, because a lot of communities are passing up on the, those federal grants because they can't, they can't, don't have the staff to apply for them, or they don't have the staff to track all the, the data that they need to. Even Goshen set up pretty well for that, and we still struggle with it. So, um, it was just, it was nice to be part of a, a federal process where, uh, they were actually, you know, really looking for input and, um, being able to re- represent local communities was, was an honor. So um, outside of that, uh, I don't have any reports or, uh, anything, uh, that's coming up to council members. I know airshow's coming up. Um, and there was one other. I'll, I'll, I'll come back to that. So go ahead, Councilman Perez.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I've been getting a couple of emails of, just in terms of residents in the community who are concerned about, um, we've seen the increased, um, gun violence in our community and across the country. And just want to let the public know that we as officials are really working hard to ensure that our community is safe and appreciate the, the work that the mayor and the police department are doing to put together a gang task force. And I hope, um, looking forward to working with you all on that. And that we as a community understand that these are hard times, but we want to work together as a community to try to solve issues. And that, um, we, we just need to do as we're doing is listening to one another and trying to stay within the bounds of how we relate. And I appreciate each one of you, and I appreciate the public and, and, you know, letting us know that they, they would like for us as a city to continue to address these issues of of gun violence in our community and whether those those types of Those types of activities on our part. Um, educate community on gun safety. Educate the community on how our community relations commission members are engaging in conversation, I just want to thank the CRC. For their work and for the many congregations and the many civic groups in our community that are attempting to try to. Bring peace to our community. And that's not easy. So I just want to say thank you to those people who are writing to me and, um, I'll continue to be committed to. Bring some of these comments, uh, I don't have a solution. But I do appreciate the work that we're starting to do as a city to address that, that gang issue and. Hopefully we can have a better, better place for us to live, uh, as we go forward, so thank you.
Thank you, and on the police note, just, uh, we've been getting a lot of complaints, summertime always happens with more speeders in different areas. Um, so I've, um, authorized police department to buy another. Oh, six or seven of those speed signs, um, which is about thirty thousand dollars, um, uh, so that we can better get throughout our community to try and. Um, yeah, just make sure we're doing all we can to stop the speeders and. One last beg and please, slow down. Uh, it's not worth the two minutes, we had a, a death not too long ago in our community of, um, somebody that was hit by a speeder and it's just not worth it.
I know Mr. Malone's already gone, but, uh. Just for the record, I just want to make sure. Everybody understands that I did none of this. Against Gleason products or Mr. Malone, I. I'm, I'm gonna, I've told him that a couple of different times, but none of this that I did. Had anything to do with going against Mr. Malone or his company.
We, and from my office and staff too, we even had a meeting with them this morning where we, we worked hard to try and relay that message, uh. Whatever reason it's not being heard, um, but yeah, it has nothing to do with that.
Um. I just wanted to piggyback on the comments about gun safety because I personally had a very, very close call. With someone shooting from the woods, uh, over the Elkhart River and we had bullets coming zoop, I've never. Experienced anything like that in my life before and, um, you know, we reported it, our, our friends and, and my husband reported it to the sheriff's. Department and to the, um, conservation officer and they're investigating it, but just a reminder of gun safety, if you do not know where your bullets are going. Please do not fire them wherever you are, whether you're outside of city limits or in, I mean, i- it's a very popular area on the Elkhart River where this occurred and I just really worry for. Future boaters, families of, you know, young people in the boat, so I just beg of people who do have guns, be responsible with them.
Do bullets skip on water?
It didn't skip, they came past us.
They do skip, don't they?
I bet they would.
Can I commend the, uh, police department before we go?
Yes.
Okay, since you brought up the speeding signs, okay, you can put one on Reliance Road. Okay, a couple of weeks ago, that, some guy truck came through there and took out the speed limit sign. And, uh, then ended up in the yard and then he left and we were able to track him down and the police department did a great job of handling that. And kept me informed and my brother informed the whole time of what was happening, so. He, uh, enjoyed the weekend, I think, uh, put away, so anyways, uh. Goshen City Police Department is excellent and always. Takes care of its, uh, citizens.
Any other elected official reports? Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?